We'll get this meeting started. Okay, this is a regular city council meeting. First of all, is anyone who would like to speak signed up tonight? I have one. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Okay, we'll watch the doors, see if anyone comes in. Okay, we'll call this meeting to our, the regular council meeting, and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present. Next, we'll have the, Kurt, do we have someone for the invocation? Next, we'll have the invocation by Ms. McLenn.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Alina Hernandez, who's a fifth grader at Castle Hills Elementary to lead the invocation tonight.
Okay, Alina, want to step forward, please? Thank you. We have the mic on for her. Thank you, Alina. Let's give her a hand, everyone. Thank you very much. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance? Let's give our ladies a hand there, please. Thank you very much. Item two on the agenda, there are no acknowledgements or recognitions tonight. So, item three will come up next, will be the citizens to be heard. Leslie, Ms. Winger? You're absolutely right. I'm sorry. I thought you were on citizens to be heard. Okay. So, she'll be speaking on items later, okay? So, let's go on to item four, which is the consent agenda. Looking at the consent agenda, is there anyone who would like to pull any specific item or discuss? All right, with that said, then we will... Basically, all that's on it was consider the approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting held on August the 8th, 2017. Do I have a motion for that item? Do I have a second? Hey, that was Mr. Paul and Mr. Gregory. All in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Let's move on to item five, please, which is old business. Let's consider a minute entry, authorizing city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with the city of San Antonio for construction goods and services, and subsequently to enter into a contract with Intermountain Slurry Seal to perform a micro-surf seal on West Avenue in the amount of 154,654.56 cents. Mr. Van De Wally?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. At our last council meeting, this was an item that was tabled until this meeting to give me an opportunity to speak with the city of San Antonio about entering into an interlocal agreement with them for construction goods and services. I've spoken to the chief of contracts for the city of San Antonio probably three, maybe four times, and traded multiple emails with her, and we're still talking about the ins and outs of that. And she's consulting with her legal team. They have an interlocal agreement with Bear County. We have an interlocal agreement with Bear County, and we may be able to piggyback on a piggyback, if that makes sense, to use our interlocal agreement with Bear County that would also exercise their interlocal agreement with the city of San Antonio to allow us to capitalize on the pricing and the contract conditions that have been established on a contract with Intermountain Slurry Seal to do a, to perform a slurry seal of West Avenue. And to speak a little bit more about that, I've got Mr. Kevin Harris, who is a representative from Intermountain Slurry Seal, to talk about what we're, what exactly we're talking about with the slurry seal process, and it'd be a good opportunity for council to ask him any questions they might have about the process. And he's also got a lot of experience when it comes to interlocal agreements and exercising construction contracts through those. Let me finalize by saying in my, in my discussions with this chief of contract from the city of San Antonio, there was some discussion about what the cost would be if we were to enter into an agreement. She believes it's either 1% or 2% of the contract cost. So, in this case, it'd be somewhere in the realm of $1,500 to $3,500 for this contract, and that would avoid a number of costs, including mobilization, demobilization, and the effort associated with going out and requesting for, requesting proposals, and so on and so forth. So, it looks like it's going to be a good deal for the city of Castle Hills if we can, if council so approves it. And like I said, I'll turn it over to Kevin Harris, who so far, his only flaw is he went to the University of Arkansas, that I can tell.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I'd like to pull this item right now, and the reason being is because there's a scheduled meeting that Bear County, their road people are volunteered to come and look at West Avenue and determine, in their opinion, what's the best way to do it as far as slurry seal, as far as another product or another way. And I think we would be derelict if we didn't at least take advantage of their knowledge since they do a lot of this.
Okay, we'll make, we'll allow council to make that decision as far as pulling the item. Is that, go ahead.
I would just encourage you to listen to Mr. Harris's presentation. He's here in San Antonio. He can tell you about the micro-slurry process, and so if you've got any questions, it'll help solidify it in your mind. You don't have to make a decision tonight, but at least pay him the courtesy to listen to his presentation and see what the product looks like.
Mr. Paul, you got a...
No objections.
A motion on it, okay.
No, he's willing to learn.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank Kurt for the invitation. It was actually a good timing. I was on my way down this way to meet with a couple of cities and to also do a presentation for an engineering firm tomorrow, so it worked out well, the timing. Like I said, my name is Kevin Harris. My background, I worked for the state of Texas highway engineer for 30 years. I used this product throughout my career. Been in the private sector for about four years now within Intermountain, and we've worked all over the state of Texas, and we worked from Missouri over to the west coast. So, to go through this briefly, it's kind of a put together just for tonight, but... So, our company, we're out of Salt Lake City, Utah. We've got offices in California, Texas, Nevada. We're owned by Granite Construction, which is one of the largest construction companies in the nation. We work, do a lot of work for the federal highways and parks. As a matter of fact, we have a crew right now up in Colorado doing their national park there. Like I said, we work from Missouri to the west coast. And the last four years, worked over 40 cities and agencies in Texas and private agencies. And we currently have a contract with the city of San Antonio for this year and next year for micro-surfacing. This is a project that the city is looking at, the possibility of using micro-on. It goes from just south of 410 up to and through across Military Parkway to the city limits here on West Avenue. About 44,000 square yards of surface area. Why are they looking at micro-surfacing? It's to build a strong pavement preservation program, and micro is a tool in that toolbox of preservation items. And preservation is, like the councilman alluded to, is the right product at the right time. There's lots of different options for preservation. Micro is just one of them. There's a variety of spray-ons, there's chip seals, we'll go into a little bit more detail in just a second. This curve kind of shows you if you've got a brand-new pavement and your condition scores, shows you that, that pavement's going to lose integrity over the years, and kind of gives you the, the stress you'll see along the way, along with the process you can use kind of to combat those. Fog seal, crack seal is up front, then you have your chip seal, then slurry micro, then you get thin overlays, and you get into reconstruction. This slide shows you, on a good pavement, a fair pavement, and a poor pavement, different procedures, and the kind of the life expectancy you can get to all those processes. By far, on a good pavement, and I would say that West Avenue is probably between the fair and the good range, closer to the good range. You've done a lot of expenses now getting the crack sealed, it's in good shape. I've talked to Kurt a little bit about, there's about four or five locations where we've got some not really base issues, more environmental issues, where we've got drought conditions that have dropped and pulled the pavement. When you've got trees alongside of pavement, those roots pull the water out, blow the pavement, and that creates a dry spot, and that tendency has to have a cracking and dropping of your pavement. But on a good pavement, a chip seal will give you about four to 10 years of extended life, a micro four to eight, and thin overlay four to 10. By far, this is your most economical process. That's where you spread an asphalt, put rock on it, roll it, and you're done. It's not well-received for city applications. It's loud, you get loose rocks, you get asphalt. Kids can't skateboard in neighborhoods, different things like that. But it's probably your most economical process. Micro, not much difference in time of, of life, but a great difference in cost. Appearance-wise, it's very similar. This kind of shows you a schematic of the process. This is your paver with all your ingredients on it. It goes to a pug mill, which you've seen them in it, discharges it to an auger into a spreader box, comes out brown. When the water leaves, you've got a black asphalt pavement. Weatherford, Texas. We've worked for Weatherford on piggybacks for the last five years. This shows you that this is there from this point down is the original type D hot mix base, asphalt and big rocks. The gritted surface with asphalt and smaller rocks, just top inch and a half. Put down a 24 pounds, can't read it from the... 24 pounds square yard, which is about a quarter inch thick, with micro on top of that. And it's actually asphalt and smaller rock. Same components as hot mix, just a whole process versus hot process, okay? What micro provides you in lieu of a, of a spray-on application, you've got a quarter inch of wearing surface here that protects that initial investment below from the elements, and gives you a wearing surface for traction and also to prevent actual wear and tear on your surface. Spray-on is going to be a very thin layer right at your interface here. Most of your spray-ons that are black today will be worn off by traffic in, in two weeks to two months. They'll still do their job as far as the micro-cracks, but they're not going to be as pretty as they were day one. Okay, so they're going to... This is kind of a process that tells you what to look for when we come on a project. Put out door hangers on the, all the residents along the way to let them know that...
One, one second, Jim. Thank you so much. I just had somebody text us in from, we're on live Ustream.
I got you.
And could you stand a little bit closer to the mic so we can hear? Thank you so much, appreciate it. We'll also turn it up a little bit. Okay, thank you.
So, the door hangers, what they do is, is they, we put those out 24 hours in advance of us starting any operations to allow the residents to know that we'll be there, okay? One thing that's a little bit challenging, we put on the front doors or on the parked cars in the street, okay? A lot of people use the back doors to come in their house, and don't use the front doors hardly at all. So, getting the word out to the public, there's a project coming out. It's kind of a city issue, and then once they're notified, we're going to be here next week or so, then start looking at your front door, because that's where they'll be notified at. You'll also see paint marks on the pavement showing the limits of our paving. That's another indicator we'll be in the, in the area pretty quick. We put out cones the day before, saying, "Don't park in the street tomorrow," because we're going to be doing some work there. And there'll be cones out, this is concrete paving, this is in the city of Baytown. They piggybacked this, this past spring. There's cones on a concrete street. Well, we're not going to mark the surface with the concrete, but that, if you park here, which is right there, this paver can't make his pass out of that intersection. So, we have to put no parking there to kind of notify them too. So, you get phone calls, "Well, there's a cone on my street, but I'm concrete." Are they going to pay a bit? No, we're not. That's there for a reason. We come through and put plastic over all the manholes, valve covers. We pave right across that, and then pull it back off again. There's no milling required at your fixtures. We're about three eighths to quarter inches thick, so we can go right over top of those, those fixtures. You'll see paint on the ground, and that says three foot offset. That lets our guys know, we'll come back and peel that paper off, it's three foot off the edge of pavement. There'll be paint on the curbs, it's all marking paint, it's not anything that's going to stay very long, it'll all, we're off with the sun. We cover inlets just in case we have a possible material to get off of that inlet, environmental safety, both for curb inlets and for ground elevation inlets. You see this truck here coming with a trailer behind it, that's part of the data paving. You need to go set cones and start blocking off roads. When you see cones like this, that's another indicator that we're getting close to starting operations, but not going to close the street off or road off yet. But be ready, because when you come back through, it may be closed off next time. There again, they're sitting in the middle, but they're not closed off yet, so hey, this still gives you safe haven to use that facility. Now, when they're closed off, for instance, on West Avenue, we would close off the side streets at the intersection. We'd leave every, every other one opened up for circulation, but while we pave that one side, we'll probably have one closed off, okay? If there's cones across the street, they're there for a reason. It helps us lower costs on doing patches that get driven on too early. It also keeps the car that up for getting on their cars. It also gives you a final better look, okay? You have traffic marks through your pavement, you're one of the good, so we have to come back and patch it again, so... I do make this comment typically, if you've got an emergency, we'll let you on, through that project. If you've got to drive through the fresh mix, it's been there for two minutes, we'll drive you through if it's an emergency. I also make the caveat, an emergency to you may not be one to us, okay? Going to the hospital, somebody's in an accident, that's an emergency. Your grandchild is recital, it's coming up in 15 minutes, that's not an emergency. You need to plan ahead for that. There's our paving operation. This is our paver, typical paver. Behind the machine, see how brown that is? That's got water in it. When it leaves, this has been down over here about, you'll sit in a little bit closer, about 45 minutes before this is put down. This is a truck mount system. In this truck's got all the aggregate, emulsified asphalt, water. It all goes through a pug mill, just like a hot mix plant, mixed together. This water is sprayed to break that surface tension on the pavement. You see this has been crack sealed in advance by the city. It comes out in a liquid slurry form in a double auger, spreads across pavement, two squeegees smoothed out. This, this side's been down about an hour, hour and a half. This will be driven on another hour. He's going to jump out and check his depth of his material, make sure it's the proper depth, get back on his paver, and keep on going. Like I said, in about an hour, you can put traffic on this, this section here. West Avenue is going to be a little bit quicker than this. This is a neighborhood, so you've got turning traffic and backing out. Over here, you've got more down-the-road traffic, so it'll be on, on traffic back on it probably pretty quick. Micro-surfacing is a little bit different than hot mix. Hot mix, you go lay it hot, you're going to roll it, it's going to be all pretty when you get through with it. Ours isn't as pretty, but it's nice-looking. But you'll see during the operation, you'll go see things like here. This is where they pulled out of a cul-de-sac and, and dropped off the paver. It looks bad up front, and San Marcos last year, we got phone calls, drove Jesse wild. I came down and got with him and kind of explained the process. This is temporary. We'll come back and pull another pass across the top of that, and there it is three weeks later. So, all those ends are tied together, but it does look kind of scary and frightening up front, but it's not. Another example, this is a city of Fort Worth job last year. This is a crossover on a Sycamore School Road Boulevard. You've got some jagged edges here, we come back and pull it through the middle of it, and there it is a year later. This is some dirt and sand that's washed off this street across this whole here, in kind of a corner. Here's behind the paver. Like I said, right behind the paver, when that water's still in the system, it's brown. When that water leaves, you're left with a black asphalt pavement. I've got some on the table up front, examples of the process, all through the rotations of the material. Here it is, right behind the paver, it's brown. In about 15, 20 minutes, the water starts being pushed out of by a chemical process, and then you've got that in about an hour, two hours, ready to drive on. During the operation, you're going to, there may be a, a rich spot, so to prevent a little bit of pickup from traffic, we'll put some dry ag on it. That'll all blend in and be back same color as the rest of it after traffic's had it for a day or two. There's a manhole cover that we've covered up and peeled back off again. Like I said, there's no adjustment that required. If you overlaid, you'd be expensed to raise those up or to mill around them and, and lower that, that system down. Issue with early traffic, you don't obey the signals and barricades. This is in Baytown. A guy came through in a duly pickup. There's where he duly set on the pavement. It picked two spots up. The tires made one rotation, it threw the two patties off. I peel, I scrape off the ground here, there's a second pad that hadn't scraped off yet. I come back through and patch them, and, and the next day, you won't know where that's at. It'll all blend back in again. I asked the guy, it was a young kid, "How'd you get right here?" He goes, "I drove around those barricades." I said, "Did somebody direct you to?" "No, I just drove around them." I said, "They're there for a reason, so please, in the future, you know, obey those things." Same thing here, cut across the lane here early. Picked up initially when it's still fresh, you come back and patch it, and it'll be, look like the same lane later on. This is for Weatherford, Texas. We did their, their service center last year. Public Works Director's been using this for four or five years with micro. He knew how the system worked. The, the service center director hadn't ever seen it before. We paved on a Sunday. He came in Monday and panicked and saw this. He goes, he said, "Manny, what have they, what have they given me here?" That's on Monday after we paved on Sunday. This is two months later. All these little lane seams here with micro and slurry both, like I said, unlike hot mix, when you get that last roll off hot mix, you're done. What you've got is what you've got. With micro and slurry in the hot part of the season, you've got two to six weeks of time where it's going to get softer with, with traffic. It's going to knead out even smoother, and you'll see that in a little bit too. Some past projects, this is the city of Fort Worth last year, in a neighborhood by some apartments. There's Sycamore School Road, major thoroughfare. There's a job we did for the New Mexico DOT up in I-25, there were time pass. Now, here, they're trying to buy three years of time with the product, not doing preservation, because this old interstate system was very cracked up, and they were getting federal funds to rebuild it, but they needed something to take, carry it the next two, three years. We've, we've got pictures that we took about a month ago when our crew went up to Colorado. Looks similar to this, the cracks hadn't come back very bad at all. It is a lighter color now because that asphalt is going to wear off at top of that rock, and it's now kind of a pinky's brown, same native colors that rock. This job was 2015 up in Colorado for the feds. Our crew is actually finishing up the second phase of this project this year. But this is, this pavement here is about four-year-old hot mix below this, so that's true preservation. But you see the look of it, it looks very similar to a hot mix overlay. City of Weatherford, run of a Mar Street School. Okay, this slide here, I like this slide. This is that service center we did for Weatherford. I say, "What are you looking at?" Just to make it quickly. That bottom half, this is the hot mix overlay, that's our product. So, to the, to the layman's eyes, there's not much difference there. This is, like I said, this place about a month, about two weeks after we got through our, our process. That's the one, that's about a quarter inch thick, it's an inch and a half thick. This is a new, new parking lot they had, they had built and put rock on and, and then overlaid it. So, with that, I'll leave. With any questions?
Thank you, Jim. What I'd like to do, if you don't mind, is let's get a, and we can still table this item based on Mr. Paul's. But let's get a motion and a second on the table, because I would also like to hear from the audience also, who signed up for this. So, let's go, do I have a motion to move forward for discussion, light discussion? So, move, second?
A second.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to go into discussion right now, and this is question and answer. Mr. Trevino? Did you have any questions for the gentleman, please?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, the contract with San Antonio, is that something that you all won?
Yes, it was completely bid.
Okay. It's my understanding that the city of San Antonio's adopted more stringent regulations in regard to asphalt as far, in regards to the environmental aspect?
I, I think they've done some changes in, in, in the process they will allow. I think they may be getting away from some fog seals, and particularly some of those fog seals being coal tar seals. This process right here is no different than an overlay, an asphalt overlay, except it's cold. Like I said, that slide a while ago that showed that cross-section, it's asphalt and rock. Same thing as a hot mix, but just a cold process. We don't have to have permits at all. We can come in and set up on, on a city yard or, or private yard we, that we secure for our staging area with no permit required. If I were a hot mix contractor, to bring a planning in, I'd have to get permits, environmental permits. We're a green-type product.
Perfect. And I guess hot mix would be the comparable product to this?
It, it's kind of a, in, in the, in the stacking categories, you've got chip seal, micro, slurry, and overlays. We're several steps below in cost for my overlay, but not much difference as far as the components. We're not a structural. If you've got a product that needs structural element to it, then by all means, mill it off and overlay it, or add more mix to it with overlay to get structural. If you've got stable conditions, then we're a preservation tool. But, but we're much similar to a, to a overlay.
Okay, and so the overlays, what's the thickness on that?
Typically, on type D hot mix, you want to go inch and a half minimum.
So, this is potentially an inch and a quarter thinner?
Yes.
So, that would be less expenses?
It's a, it's a third of cost.
Because of the height difference?
Height difference, with a new inch and a half overlay, you get to go in there and either mill down, taper mill at your cutter pans, and then raise your, your manholes and valves up, whereas we come in and taper down the edges to match your cutter pan, and no milling required on, on your fixtures. I did a quick number, and this is just a quick number, on the, the horse track over here. Their parking lot area. And the savings between an inch and a half overlay at the current prices here in San Antonio was about, if I remember right, like $750,000 cheaper doing a micro versus an overlay. I can, I can give you those exact numbers, but that's just off my head.
Lastly, on your proposal, I see a line item for door hangers.
Mm-hmm.
What...
That's a notification process.
What was it, sir?
The notification process, to notify all the residents along the way that we're going to be there.
It, what, how far out does that go?
We typically put those on the doors the day before. The cones go out the day before also. What I can do, what we can do if we get this project, project, for San Antonio, I come back in a week in advance and put a yard sign out that says basically, "Look for this door hanger on your door soon." Kind of gives them another 10 days or a week's advance notice that you've been warned. Like I mentioned, last year, we did a neighborhood at the, up top of one of the hills in San Marcos, and, and day one, our operations, they just bombarded the city with phone calls. After that, I told Jesse, "From here on out," and we already did this year, "For next year's project, if you've got a sensitive neighborhood, I'll come down a month ahead of time, you set up a town hall meeting, I'll go through this slide presentation here, show them what to expect, and maybe it'll help you out a little bit." We've done that already. We had three people there. So, the ones that didn't come, they're the ones that called, and then we'll start.
And when I meant how far, I mean, from, from West Avenue, do you go out to just the immediate streets?
Okay, I'm sorry. We, we do all the adjacent... We do all the adjacent access residents to the West Avenue. We don't go, we can't, we don't go blocking, you know, to each side.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris.
Sure, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Did you have any questions or comments for the gentleman? Thank you. Ms. McLean? Mr. Paul, did you have any questions or comments for the individual gentleman?
Yeah, I believe it's coal tar that's been banned from the city.
Right.
And on your contract, I did read where it talked about special conditions, and in doing so, we're responsible for prepping the street for your work, according to the contract. I would have thought that would be inclusive of any contract.
What we do for our operations is, we'll come in and pre-sweep to clean the pavement off, but any repair work, part of the prep work is crack sealing, which you've already got done. For West Avenue, all it needs to be done before we move in would be to prepare those spot areas to make sure you've got a uniform, stable pavement conditions out there. We come in and pre-sweep, and then we lay our process down.
Well, what it says here, owner, that'd be the city, I suspect, is responsible for all prep work, including removal of excess gravel from edges, applying herbicide, crack sealing, and patching. Contractor is to sweep only prior to the surfacing. So that's what, you know?
Right, and I, those are my words. I encourage all my cities to herbicide the grass out of the cracks, because what asphalt does, either it's emulsified asphalt or hot mix overlay, it acts like a fertilizer. So if you've got live grass in those cracks, and we weed eat all that grass out before we pave. Well, when our crews come in, weed eat it and blow it out. But if I weed eat live grass and you hit it with that emulsified asphalt, it's going to be up within four, five days.
Well, the point I was getting at is that we have a lot more prep work than you said, according to this. And that's all I was making a comment of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory, did you have any comments for the gentleman, please?
The expected life of this is five years?
Industry standards for Micro is four to eight. I've got some down in Sherman, Texas, for Tex-OT that I put out in 2006. I've got a picture I took last week. It's got crack seal on top of it, but it's all still there. If you've been to Fort Worth in front of the Speedway, that was Micro placed in 2005. It's worn down in the wheel pads and places, but it's got 85,000 cars a day on it. It's been out for 12 years. It is, it's a preservation tool to help extend the life of that pavement and protect what's below there. But four to eight years is the industry standard, average.
Now, VIA runs this very heavily, and they have promised for I don't know how many years, they were going to replace several places, massive replacement of concrete in where their buses stop.
Okay.
Now, you come down and do this project, and VIA decides that, well, now they've decided they're going to do something. When they put down the concrete and start chopping into what you've already put there, is that going to cause cracks in what is being done so that water can come underneath this and damage the slurry seal?
I would always recommend to any agency or customer, if you're going to cut into the base, for whatever reason, to do a base repair or to put a pad in for concrete, is to come back and crack seal around the perimeter. And most agencies don't do that. We did HOA in Weatherford last year, two years ago. Every patch they did before we got there, at the low end of that patch, water was getting in those joints, those new joint, construction joints, migrating down the bottom of that patch and come back out again. They had a cancer growing, more base problem down below. Anything you do post-Micro, we're a quarter-inch-thick material, okay? So all that construction traffic could be turning on it, could damage it. Once it cures out, and like I said, in this particular project here, if it's done in the late summer, early fall, it's going to cure pretty quick because it's not going to be hot very long. It's a pretty tough product. I can show you a photograph we did for the feds in Oklahoma two years ago, where the chip seal contractor came through the week later and chipped seal the main roads and locked down his tires on our Micro. It skidded the rocks on top of Micro, did not hurt the Micro, just scratched off the asphalt. It's a tough product. It's asphalt and rock when it cures out. Just depends on what the cure time may be. But to answer your question, if you cut a perimeter patch in that pavement out there, I would recommend you crack seal, let it keep that water out.
I've seen streets where you, it looks like, I don't know whether it's slurry seal or not, where it looks like just holes of this stuff has just come up. It didn't adhere for whatever purpose. Is that the process, is that what happens is when it gets old, four, or five, or six, or seven years down the road, the stuff just starts coming apart?
Not with my experience with Tex-OT. One issue with slurry Micro can be debonding issues, and that can be caused from either bad workmanship up front, not cleaning your pavement good. It could be caused from, Micro will definitely seal off that street, and if you've got water from the bottom up that can't get out, it builds up a pore pressure and traps water below the bondit seal, Micro, and it could give you problems when it starts freezing thawing. That's another possibility of why it may de-bond. The biggest culprit is going to be either workmanship when it's being built, proper mixture of your material when it's paved out, or you're dropping contaminated on the ground in front of your paver.
We're not as bad as Terrell Hills. I mean, they're like a roller coaster, they're land over there. But you do have uplift. Up here on Lemonwood, we did work on Lemonwood many years ago, and it's hard to tell you even did any work on there because the street is undulated all over the place. What can the city do to ensure that once this is down, it will keep its consistency and have its full life, knowing that there's going to be up and down movement?
I guess to respond to that, your Micro is going to be a layer of sealant to preserve what's below it. If your pavement below is not stable and it's moving, the Micro could move with it. If it pushes out, it's going to ride that wave and push out with it. It's not going to fix any issues other than preservation needs for the pavement. If you've got unstable soils, if you've got moving clays, it's going to move with it. What I've seen, which is kind of typical, is if, when that pavement, if you get a rut in the pavement and pushes out, that Micro rides that rut out. Doesn't really crack off and flake off, it did rise that same profile. But it's not going to fix anything for you, other than preserve what you already got. It's going to extend the life of that pavement, not fix any problems you've got underground.
Thank you, Douglas. Mr. Brennan or City Manager, what are the likelihood of, in reference to Douglas's question, if VIA comes in and tears something up there, can we put that in the VIA contract in order to, for them to go in and repair and have Jim come back and do repairs in that? Is that normal? In other words, you're going to come in there and tear out a, I think a 300-square-foot pad, and we have a, we have a cut street ordinance in this city in effect right now, where, I don't care who it is, they break into the street, they do block-to-block repair.
Mayor, if they come in here and during a construction project, they tear something up, they need to fix it. So that's typical for construction.
Good to me. Do you all do that? Do you come back for?
We can come back and, even during the process, if somebody cuts across fresh mat, we'll back up the next day and lay another skin patch.
I'm talking about a year from now.
Well, we're going to be in San Antonio next year also, so we'll be right here to cap it back off.
Of course, you'll get paid for it, you know?
Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, ask a question?
Sure.
Yes, sir. What kind of timeframe are we looking at? What's the disturbance to the residents in the area, approximately?
You've got that quote in front of you, it should stay at the bottom, how many shifts? With city, I see, probably about two, two days, three days, maybe? It should say two or three shifts on that quote.
Okay. So two or three days for all of West Avenue?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And that's, this is a pretty wide street. It'll go, we can do, we did, that's 658 tons for this project. We've laid 658 tons in Lubbock in one night. So, I mean, that's night work, okay? But that may be an option, if you all want to do it at night. We're going to be here for a duration, like I said, that could all be knocked out, especially the long section from 14 up to the Parkway. Those two short segments, when you cross over, it takes a little bit of time. But like I said, we've laid 600, 700 tons in one night in Lubbock before.
I'm assuming there's a surcharge for night work?
It's a little bit different because we've got to take our crew off of a shift for a day to get them acclimated to day to night. So it'd be like a one-day partial shutdown for us, but we can work through that and work with you on that.
One last question. How much time, in your professional opinion, how much time do you think we have with the existing conditions on West Avenue before we would need a more costly or method?
From what I've seen, and pointing out with Kurt, other than those environmental problems, there's a little bit of minor rutting, but very, very little. Rick's going to catch that. But I don't know how old that pavement is. I'm going to guess it's probably, I don't know how old it is, Rick, do you know? I'd say close to 20 years old, but it looks stable. You've got a lot of crack seal on it, but that doesn't mean it's got any base issues. A lot of times when you see cracking out there, everybody says, "Oh, you've got base problems." A lot of that cracking is because of the current quality of hot mix we got, asphalt, and you get a lot of top-down cracking. City of Kerrville, we did slurry seal for those guys two years ago, and their consultant told them that every street in Kerrville, they'd be tore from the base up. And I saw no streets that were going to slurry seal that had any base problems. It was oxide pavement from top down. Tearing up pavement and rebuilding the streets, that's the easy answer to give anybody for a fix, and that's the most expensive, and people can't afford that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I ask one more last question? You talk slurry seal. As I understand, as I understand, it's slurry seal, sealing is a process. What is the product that you actually use?
Micro and slurry both are basically an aggregate, emulsified asphalt, a little bit of Portland cement for the mineral filler at the bottom, minus 200, and then water, okay? The asphalt emulsion on a slurry seal is typically a quick-set emulsion.
Right.
For a micro-surfacing process like we're doing here, is a polymer-modified emulsion, higher-quality, tougher emulsion.
So it's one that you developed and put together?
It's not us. We are an applicator.
Okay.
We buy the, we buy the product from Ergon, which is the only one in Texas that does emulsified asphalt, and we buy the rock from a rock source, and we blend it with our process on the pavement, on the ground.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Trevino, were you finished?
One last question. Mr. Harris, do you require any traffic mitigation from the city?
Typically, no. Sometimes cities want to be part of that traffic handling. It's just all, what we have in this quote here would be for us to do the lane closures while our operation is in place. Like I said, I've had cities that want to be involved in that. Some say, "Go take care of it." But this operation here would be typically a lane closure, airboard, close one lane off, pave it, circle back around to the outside over here, and pave it and fortify.
So you wouldn't require our police officers?
No, there is an item in San Antonio's contract for police officers. I didn't include it in here because I don't think we'll need them. But it's there in case you all think it's warranted. We've got that option to add that to it, because there is an item for police involvement.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Before we move on to public comment, Rick, did you have any questions for the gentleman? Okay, thank you very much. We have?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim. All right, we have Ms. Winger, you're signed up for this item, and also Jenna. You came in late. If you'd like to speak, just let me know, okay? Or anybody else out there?
Thanks, Leslie Winger, 137 Lou John Circle. Well, I actually had something else to say, but after listening to this, I'm kind of terrified, and I want to thank Mr. Paul and Mr. Trevino for their very intelligent questions. First of all, the fact that the city is going to be required to do track sealing ought to be, you know, a deal breaker right there, because we don't have that kind of capability. If anything goes wrong with the track sealing, we're going to get blamed for it. The warranty isn't going to stand. So that's, you know, something that I picked up on when Mr. Paul brought that up. The other thing is, for those of you who remember, and I know there's only two of you left who were on the council when we voted to do Reclamite on our streets, that was a real waste of money. We're not the only government that wastes money. The federal government wastes money, the state government wastes money. Everybody gets talked into these sales pitches. San Antonio County of Bear also was doing Reclamite, and it didn't work. It was, we took all of the money that we had collected for our street funds, the entire amount, and we spent it on something that was no good. So my other concern about this is that everybody's complaining about the streets. Nobody is complaining about West Avenue. And so my question is, why are we taking this massive amount of money and using it on West Avenue on a very questionable project? And if anybody hasn't read the sales pitch on Reclamite, you really need to take a look at it, because it's very similar. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Okay. We do have a motion, and we have a second on the table. Mr. Paul, did you want to say anything moving forward? Or to still table?
I would still like to pull this item because of the obvious reasons that I mentioned, and the 15th would be, I mean, excuse me, the 30th is a week from tomorrow, I guess.
Okay, so basically, you're making a motion to table this item until the 15th, is that correct?
No, until, I guess, the next council meeting. Because Wednesday, tomorrow, a week there, Bear County, as I said, they've offered their expertise in this situation, and they may very well appreciate the process and want us to move ahead with this. But I just think it would be derelict if we didn't get their opinion on things, since they do an awful lot of roads.
Could you put that in a form of a motion, please?
I so move.
Thank you. Do we have a second on Mr. Paul's motion, Manny?
Uh-huh.
Second.
Okay, Manny, did you get that? All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table to table this item until the next meeting?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
I noticed on here, this proposal is valid through the 31st of November of this year, is that correct? If we decide to go ahead with this, we have until the 31st of November of this year to go ahead and accept this contract? Okay, same price, same contract through the 31st of November. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second on the table to...
At what date does that price go away?
What I understand, this was a, we'll know in a week what's going on at the next council meeting, is that correct, Mr. Paul?
According to my information.
Okay, and if we don't, then we'll deal with it at that time, one way or another?
I would think so. And Mr. VanderWiley said that he was waiting for some additional information, I believe, from the city on the pricing and stuff, which would be helpful, too.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident in the information I've got right now, but waiting is not going to hurt us. By the way, I tried to call Tony Voskis from Bear County today to have the conversation with him about what he's going to present in his meeting. But I think it's important to note, too, that Bear County is brokering a deal to exercise their ILA with the City of San Antonio, or attempting to use this same product in Bear County.
Okay.
It's, I think it'll, I think it's, there's a lot of, makes good sense to wait, but I'm glad that you all took the time to let Mr. Harris give his spiel.
Okay, now we have a motion, we have a second on the table to hold this until our next regular city council meeting. All in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Thank you. Reserve the right if these, if anyone could call you afterwards, any one of the council members. Can we get your information, so we know how to do that? Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next item. That was old business number five. Let's move on to item number six, consider by minute entry authorization to submit an application to be considered for the U.S. Department of State's Passport Acceptance Program. Ms. McLean?
All right, since we're always in the market for new revenue streams that do not tax our citizens more, raise property taxes, raise sales taxes, this opportunity became, I became aware of this opportunity a couple of weeks ago when we were renewing passports for our children. And for the two hours that we were waiting, I got on the U.S. Department of State's website and found that you can make an application to be an acceptance facility. The income to the city would be a $20, a $25 application fee that the person submitting their application for a passport is made payable to. their application for a passport is made payable to the city of Castle Hills. Additional services can be offered. For instance, San Antonio offers pictures, so you don't have to go by CVS or Walgreens. They take your picture, it's $15, then you charge sales tax, so that's another $2.80 or 60-something cents. So some total, it's about $42 a person if somebody takes advantage of the whole package. The program itself to apply is free. We set our hours. We determine what employees are going to be trained to be passport acceptance people, and it really involves a computer access to the Department of State's information, a copy machine, a camera, a photo printer, and you do batch mailing each day. They've got a whole process for it. To even see if we could be accepted is a free process that I think is worth looking into for us as a city council. We can work with the staff and see what hours we would like to have. That is completely flexible. They ask that we try to be open for 20 hours a week. And the reason why I think this would be good for our city is the 10 nearest places that you can apply for a passport, out of the top 10, seven of them are U.S. post offices that are by appointment only. Three of them are the city of San Antonio, all downtown, and all three of the ones downtown for San Antonio offer picture services. So we're in a unique situation at a crossroads in San Antonio, located right off of 410, with several hundred thousand people traversing our city every day. We are conveniently located to I-10, to 281, to downtown, to 1604. We've got a very unique situation in the city where I feel like we would be a good asset to the Department of State's program. They anticipate the need of some ridiculous number of millions of passports needed in the next couple of years, and I don't see any reason why our city can't take advantage of some of that income.
Thank you, Ms. McLean, McLenn. Can we, let's get a motion and a second on the table and move forward for a regular discussion, please?
Make a motion.
Okay, second? Second by Mr. Trevino. Did you get that, Manny? Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table for business number six. Let's start off with Douglas. Douglas, you have any questions or comments for Ms. McLenn?
Ms. McLenn, this will require no new personnel?
It does not require any new personnel right now. They do have to be trained, but we actually have a unique situation. The lady that I've been speaking with in Houston will actually be in San Antonio the week of November 13th through 17th, and she would actually be willing to have our employee shadow her and actually have onsite, hands-on training on how to accept passports, which is not something they usually do. So it can be existing personnel. It can be extended at a point where we feel like we're making money doing it. We, that can be changed as we go through the process.
So the only cost is the camera, basically?
Right, a camera would be about it, I think.
Already have, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Paul, do you have any questions for Ms. McLenn, please?
So what this is really for is to go ahead and make an application, and in the meantime, we will be looking at the potential process and how it's going to be handled. That doesn't mean we have to accept the application if it doesn't seem to fit. Is that correct?
So in the application process, we actually have to set forth, the employees that we propose be part of this program, we have to set forth our proposed hours. And so we really have to have a good idea of what we're going to be offering upfront as far as hours and employees when we submit the application. It doesn't mean they'll accept it. I think, logistically speaking, when they look at the city of San Antonio with 1.5 million people in the area, that we would have a good chance of being accepted, but it's not a certainty.
Get your question answered, Mr. Paul?
Yes, because it still tells me that we may, we can still throw the application out there and take a look at it and see if the process works for us in the meantime. And of course, if we fill out the application, as I understand it, then we have to give them specific facts on certain items, which is fine.
But I understand the way, Mr. Brennan, jump in anytime. I understand the thing is, if it passes tonight, it's a go.
With the application, yes, it is.
And we would go ahead and move forward if they accept our application?
To my knowledge, that if they accept our application, we're not glued to anything. If, if the process is such that it looks good, I think we ought to try it.
Mamie, are we glued to anything?
The only thing we're glued to is submitting what we can offer them, and they either accept it or they don't. If they accept it--
Just want to make sure we're clear that we don't, we're real good at stepping into things and then backing back, okay? I want to make sure that we don't step into something with the federal government and have to back up.
Well, the city needs to be prepared to understand that if this is a very active situation, which hopefully it would be, that we may have to, in fact, look at a part-time employee to take care of it because, quite frankly, as we all know here, the staff in there is busy, quite busy the way it is, so.
So is this an idea that's going to come back to council? I just want to be clear here because I don't want to, I don't want us to be fooling around with the federal government, asking them to do something for us, and then all of a sudden, we're like, oh, we're not going to do that. So we ought to talk about that now if we're worried about an employee.
So if you start looking at the numbers, even if we accepted 10 applications a day at $25, which wouldn't be a whole lot of work, it takes about five to 10 minutes to process one of these, that's $250 a day times five days a week, say for 50 weeks a year, that's $62,000. I think there's plenty in there if at some point it became busy that you needed to hire a part-time person. I think there's sufficient--
Or an outside person to come in to cover anything that we were beyond what we could handle.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Paul, do you get your question answered there?
Yeah, anything like this is, is always worth a try. It doesn't mean we have to stay with it long-term if it doesn't work out.
Okay, sounds good to me. So I was, my question was to show me the money, but you showed me the money, so. Ms. Scott, did you have any questions regarding the item on the table, please?
No, because they've been answered by previous questions. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't know if this is outside the purview of this topic, but are we deliberately discussing who the potential employee would be or what department it would be? Because that's kind of an area of concern to me. I love the idea, but as Mr. Paul said, the city is pretty, stretched pretty thin. If you have somebody that slipped my mind, I'd like to know.
So as part of the process, since we haven't actually submitted the application, this would definitely be something where everybody has to be on board with the names that are put on it. But I would leave that up to the staff to decide who would like to participate and try to make it work. I don't think us as council should be deciding that or micromanaging that. I think that's something that if, that we should get with the city manager and the city secretary and, and whoever we have on staff that feels like they would like to work with us on this project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think we ought to treat this as we did the STEP program when we started that, give it a one-year trial, and if after the end of one year, the cost-benefit analysis proves to be good for us, we continue. But I, Ms. McLenn, can we back out of this at any time once we start it?
Well, I'm assuming then we just reduce our hours to something that they don't like, and they just say, never mind, you're not an approved facility. So I think you could sort of go into the sunset out of this. I'm hopeful that what we'll see is that this becomes a nice revenue stream for us that we can use for all of the projects that we have going on in the city.
Mr. Mayor, is this a proper time to ask our city manager what he thinks of this process? That might be appropriate.
Of course.
I think this has good potential to be a revenue generator for the city.
I don't know what the volume would be, but I think it would be, as a minimum, it would be a nice service to offer for our residents, and it might be a way to also draw revenues from outside the city limits of Castle Hills. Nobody likes to go to the post office necessarily and have to make an appointment. Nobody wants to go fight the traffic and find a place to park downtown where they have to pay. They'd get great treatment here, great customer service. I have no doubt of that. The staff is very, you know, friendly and always get huge compliments from the citizens for them. I do think we need another employee to do this. You guys all know, you've sat through the budget reset, you know what our unfunded liabilities are with comp time, and I, we have been nipping away at that at best we possibly can. So I think the idea to start it maybe with a part-time employee and open the office for four hours a day, and then if that seems like it's making money for the city, then you could always expand that to full-time. The other big concern I have is physical space for this activity to take place in, and that kind of ties to our next topic on the agenda as well, which is the impound lot. So, so these are some things that I've had some conversations with some of the council members about, how do we create more space for these activities? It's amazing the staff gets along as well as they do because they sit on top of each other virtually in many, in many instances. So that's something that I think you need to consider. I don't think that should be, I don't think those concerns should turn this off because I think the revenue could very quickly offset whatever facility improvements you would have to put in place in order to support these activities, and then they become a revenue generator on a continual basis. So I think it's a great idea. I do think it needs to be staffed appropriately, and I think we need to talk space at some point, the final frontier.
Thank you, Mr. Van De Wally. Mr. Gregory, we have a motion. We have a second on the table to move forward. If you'd like to throw in an amendment on a sunset clause, I would do so at this point.
Yes, I would like to make an amendment that with, at the end of one year, this will be sunsetted unless it's determined that after one year, it has proven to be a profitable enterprise. Otherwise, it automatically sunsets.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. So in other words, we have to come back and address this in one year rather than to move it forward and summarize it after one year.
This simply means that we can start it, do it for one year easily. The, the city manager can show at the end of that one year whether it's been a profitable enterprise or not. If it has shown that it has not generated sufficient money to cover the total cost, it ends.
Okay, do I have a second on that amendment? We'll call it again. Mr. Gregory would like a sunset provision on an amendment to the original motion to, for this for one year. And then what would happen after that period of time is we would, we would come back together, reevaluate it, but it would end at the period of one year moving forward. Is there a second? Item dies for lack of second. Let's go back to the original motion. Is there any more comments before we move forward?
Mr. Mayor, make a comment?
Yes.
I would just like confirmation that we can dismantle it if it, for any reason, is unfavorable. I don't want to go and presume that we can and for whatever reason we're stuck with this city program that's not able to be disbanded.
Mr. Trevino, when I read over this thing, what I saw and, and is that if we fail to meet the guidelines of the contract, as Ms. McLenn said, they would decide for us.
So our application sets forth what we're going to do, and if we fail to do those things, I'm pretty sure they'll come in quickly and tell us that we're no longer an acceptable facility for accepting passports.
And if we're making $50,000 or $200,000 a year, if we fail their guidelines, then of course we would lose the opportunity to do that. So we have a motion, and we have a second on the table for item number six. Authorization to submit an application to the, to be considered for the U.S. Department of State Passport Acceptance Program. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor? It is unanimous. Nobody was signed up to speak. I'm sorry that I didn't go beforehand and ask if anybody wanted to. Okay. Thank you, council. We're moving forward. Consider by minute entry approval of the concept for vehicle storage in impound lot and the associated staff and facilities. Mr. Davis? Or, or Johnny? Thank you, chief. Future chief, Johnny?
Okay, good evening, city council, Mr. Mayor, city staff, and those in attendance. With some interests, some common interests on an impound yard, the chief and I have developed a three-slide PowerPoint presentation to convey some of, some of the items we think should be considered before this endeavor. To begin with, and paramount to the police department, we think that there are operating efficiencies to be gained, which include chain of custody for our investigations, further criminal investigation holds, felonious cases, seized vehicles, and we would have a place to store those as, and again, chain of custody is, is a pretty large issue as well. The operating efficiencies, again, are paramount, and that's what's driving our interest in the yard itself. There's also internalizing functions, less outsourcing, more control over a critical function, higher use of city resources, the owned property in question, current uses construction, storage, unsightly and unwelcome in large part. Advance the current aesthetics of city property, or more aptly, an eight-foot masonry-type fence similar to what Public Works and Fire currently have. More neighbor-friendly lighting and cameras. There are some budgetary considerations that we've identified. Personnel, startup, include office, computer, phone line, and the like. Impound volume. Multi-personnel demands as well are to be taken into consideration. In other words, the impact that other entities within the police department and perhaps the city as a whole would experience. Here is a brief breakdown of what the chief and I think is a conservative approach to how many vehicles would be towed, or, excuse me, let me be more clear on that, how many vehicles would be impounded at, at the potential yard. I'll give you a few minutes to digest that before we move forward. This is the last slide. If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask. You bet. Councilman?
I'm going to start back at the analysis phase up there. When you say that for each vehicle impounded, the city receives $27.50, I presume that's by statute or by law, or is that just a general rule?
It is governed by statute, yes.
Okay. It says plus 25% of all fees collected for storage. What does that mean? Because 25% of $27.50 is--
No, it's, chief, and please feel free to come in and join. It's going to be fees that are gained from the storage, you know, continued storage of those items. There's also a--
I guess what, I was curious if you had an example of, if we towed a car, or had it towed, brought it to our impound lot, and let's say we had it a week, what type of charges would the person be looking at when, what would that benefit us, other than the advantages that you already mentioned?
If you're looking at the $27.50 per impound, is, are you looking at something relative to that? That, okay, that's the, that's likely our current contract that we have with our, with our impound folks. So we would not, that's what we're getting currently with outsourcing.
Okay.
Okay? Thus far, just to put some numbers with it, thus far this year through June 30th, the city has collected $12,807 from our current impound fees from our current contract with the tow cut, tow truck company. If we were to not outsource, we would average approximately $370 per impound. So you, you cut out the outsourcing, so to speak, and you insur-- So you, you cut out the outsourcing, so to speak, and you have it in-house. So that is where you receive a greater volume of revenue coupled with the impound.
Well, that's what I was looking at because we have a process now and the process is going to exist because of what happens in our city and people don't pay attention and don't do what they're supposed to do. So we might as well, if we're gonna keep the city clean, keep it looking nice, we might as well take advantage of it at the same time.
Well, I think vehicles will be impounded, you know, across the state of Texas and the United States all the time, just for various reasons. The only thing that, that the concept is, we're talking about here is simply just, instead of outsourcing, facilitating the operation ourselves.
Thank you.
Johnny, when, when you get into this, because I think we're putting the cart before the horse here as far as, this isn't, this isn't necessarily the percentage of vehicles that'll be impounded by the city, from, from city residents or whatever it might be. This is impound from drug dealers, people who are cutting through the city, cars we impound. I want to make sure council is very clear on this, City Balcony Heights does it, and you know, we're, we're not out there gonna be driving down every street saying, oh, I don't like that car, so we're gonna put it in the impound. This is going to give us the flexibility in order to, instead of making $27.50, when we call the towing company, where does that other hundred, $250 go? It goes into the pocket of the...
That's right.
Exactly right, the facility and things like that. So I would be more worried about, again, I am an optimist, I would be more worried about when we do get into this, that we're gonna have to get a bigger boat, if you know what I mean.
Our figures here today are pretty conservative, even by our own, own standards.
I think this is half of what we're gonna make based on balcony.
We're not looking at it from, with that lens, Mr. Mayor, although I understand your, your need to do that, we're simply looking at it through the lens of law enforcement.
Of course.
That said, though, you make, you bring up a very good point. We would never take away officer discretion to exercise an impound once a vehicle or operator has met that, those requirements, it's entirely up to the officer. That said, I couldn't promise that nobody in the city will ever not have their vehicle impounded as well, but I bet the percentage is extremely small as our citizens.
But we're not out there hunting.
Our citizens take care of their business.
Another benefit of this, Mayor, is the individual that we're talking about hiring to manage this would be trained as a dispatcher and when this individual wasn't available, that they were on leave or vacation or sick or something like that, one of the other dispatchers would cover this duty. So it also increases the capability of our city staff, particularly if we have some kind of a massive storm or some kind of a major event where we needed additional people at dispatch, this is an extra body than that we can leverage against that requirement. So it's, it actually increases your dispatch capability as well.
If I may, yep, we want to stress to council, if we move forward with this concept, of course, this is the early stages, but we can't have one without the other, so to speak. We can't have an impound yard if we don't have staff to, to manage it.
I understand.
And operate that, you know, just moving forward, and this ties into the, to the previous agenda item, facilities, office space and so forth. So considering it maybe a package thing, I'm not sure how it would be wrapped, but we, we can't forget about one without the other.
Of course, and I wouldn't, you know, we never want to be afraid to make money.
One of the, one of the recommendations from the staff mayor as we brainstorm this has been that we use the seed fund to initially fund the project that would create the space for the impound lot operator, create some additional court space back here in the back, which is desperately needed, get our code compliance officer out of the copy room in there, and also take care of the passport acceptance facility and fund all that out of the seed account, and then the revenues from the passport acceptance facility and the impound lot would reimburse the seed account. Probably about a two to three-year period would take to pay that back on, based on very conservative estimates, two to three years, they would pay the seed fund back so it would be whole again, and then those revenues would come into the general fund for, for other things, for infrastructure needs or whatever, whatever we might levy them against.
Do we have any further information on grants or anything like that to match that capitalization that we're gonna be doing?
No, we do know that we have a court security fund, so there's a portion of every ticket that comes through, it's a court security fund, and we could use that resource if we're building court space and we're increasing the security of the, of the facility. In addition, we would be able to, I mean, it does a lot of good things for the city. It deconflicts the traffic flow between permits and between the court personnel on a, on a busy court day on Thursday, that little, maybe 10 by 10, 12 by 12 space can have as many as 10 or 15 people standing in there, and they're not all the same, they don't all represent the same walks of life, some are dealing with the court side, some are dealing with the permit side. And then the city staff, that's our only entrance into the city staff offices, so you have to wade through all that when you come in, or if one of our residents come in and sees, so it's...
I got it.
There's a lot of synergy in this concept.
Okay, let's get a motion and a second. Are you finished, Johnny?
Yes, sir, unless there's any other questions.
Hang on, let's get a motion and a second on the table, at least to discuss this. I'd also like to hear what the public has to say.
So move.
And somebody has signed up, go ahead.
A second.
Okay, good.
Move, yes.
Okay, we've got a motion and we've got a second on the table. Did you get that, Mini? Thank you. Okay, with that said, we got a motion and a second on the table, let's start to the left, my left. Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir, thank you. Chiefs, I imagine that we have the historical data showing how many cars have been towed for the past couple of years, so we know what the sustainability of this is approximately. Is that correct?
We, we pulled the 2016 data, we're averaging about 360 toes slash impounds for 2016, and you might make, mention that we only show 250 vehicles on our, using our figures. Reason being is we would not anticipate storing any damaged vehicles that was leaking oil or radiator fluid, therefore, there would be different requirements, more burden on the city. We would simply impound vehicles that were running, operable and good, good condition. All the other, so, so we just conservatively used 250 out of the 300 and so that we impound. That number, again, is conservative and all the rest of those would go to, to the current impound facility that we're using now or another one. So yes, about 360 toes a year, we're just basing our numbers on about 250.
This program is, just lost my train of thought. The program wouldn't preclude us from continuing to operate with the existing facility if, for whatever reason, we were at capacity or we didn't have the space.
That, we would negotiate that in a contract with an tow truck company, an impound yard off-site. It's currently what we're doing already. You could take the damaged vehicles and you take any overflow that we have, and Mr. Brennan could probably work up a contract or city attorney.
And that would avoid us from having to store damaged vehicles in the back for that short period of time, I'm assuming?
Yeah, we don't want to, I don't think we want to get involved in storing vehicles that are wrecked and damaged.
Okay, that's it this time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Ms. Scott, did you have any comments or questions for the item on the table, please?
Just clarifying, we won't have any environmental issues because we're not storing damaged vehicles, wrecked vehicles, those would go to our current contract.
That's, that's the plan in the early stages.
Thank you.
Ms. McLean?
No, I think you all have answered most of my questions. I, one of the things that I like about the concept of bringing this to our backyard is chain of custody inconvenience for our officers so that we have a better handle on chain of custody of the vehicles that are in our possession as well as are mindful of the amount of time you all spend traveling to our current impound lot.
Thank you.
That is a good question. How much time do officers spend having to go, if there's a vehicle that is in part of investigation and they have to go over and look at the vehicle, how much time is that taking them?
It varies, the current location is just inside the loop on Bandera Road at 410, so mean traffic, it varies. I mean, it's really tough to, to put a number on it, I don't know the...
So maybe...
Could take up to an hour and a half, two hours if, when they engage in having to do that.
So an estimate, hour and a half to two hours to travel over, do what they need to do, gather evidence, whatnot, come back with chain of custody versus having it here close onsite in Castle Hills would cut down considerably on their time.
It would, it'd be considerable, yes ma'am, cutting back on the time, no doubt.
Chief, before we move on, not to be, not to be pro or con on this, when we had a vehicle in the back, we found, did we ever find a considerable, large amount of money in one of those vehicles after a day or so?
You know the answer to that, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, I was just wondering, thank you. Mr. Paul?
Yes, just quickly, chief and Kurt, if I'm not mistaken, all we're doing is approving here the concept for y'all to move forward and come back to us with some specific objectives or specific plans on how we move forward, correct?
We're still working on this. Captain Siemens is engaged in conversations and meetings with other cities that are, that are currently doing it and successful at it. So we, the concept is certainly there, we wanted to let council know what we were thinking, and it's certainly up to them on what actions that they take after we come back with more information.
Douglas?
I'm glad we're gonna stick with the proposal as in the packet because the proposal in the handout simply says that we should build the lot. It doesn't say we're, it doesn't say we're approving a concept, so I'm glad we're sticking with that. I would sug, have you talked with the owner of the residential property that backs up to this property right now to see what they say?
Not about this concept because we're, we're not quite there yet.
But you will before you come back before council?
I would suggest somebody needs to speak with them, yes, absolutely.
Okay. An eight, an eight-foot masonry fence, eight may be good, ten may be better, or that's six to one, half dozen the other. How much do we pay a dispatcher?
We pay a dispatcher, depending on their level, either $34,000 or $36,000 a year, and a chief dispatcher gets paid $42,000.
This lot, would it be paved or would it be mud?
Early indications are we would do compressed base, that's, that's what we're currently having discussions about.
Okay. What would be the hours of this lot?
24/7. Accessibility hours, daytime operating hours for the employee to manage it would be a Monday through Friday or Monday through Thursday type hour, but they, the vehicles need to be accessible 24 hours a day if an owner comes in for their vehicle.
So it's, it's run by a city employee, Monday through Friday. So if somebody comes by at 3:00 in the morning and they say they want the car, what's the process they go through?
Well, that, we would work through that, I think, I don't know what Balcony Heights is currently doing, Cap may be able to elaborate on that a little bit more.
I thought, councilman, that at one point they had stated that there was an exception to the hours that they had to keep based on them being a government entity. I'll need to, I'll need to confirm that, that I think may have changed in statute that they have to be available 24/7. Then the, according to that other slide on, on becoming a little more cumbersome for other employees, patrol, what somebody would have to come in from patrol via dispatch radio request and, and handle that for the individual.
What do we do with overflow? Let's say we full up at 2:00 in the morning, and we have three cars ready to be dumped in there, what do we do with those cars?
Yeah, Richard's with the current contracted company or another contracted company?
Okay. What do we do with vehicles that are left in there and not collected?
After the appropriate statutorily defined letters were sent out, I believe it gets you to about a 31-day window, 32-day window, then they go to auction.
And who gets that money?
Well, we do, after a small percentage, I believe it's about a 10% auction fee that the auctioneer company keeps.
That's not the royal we, but is the we, the police department or the city?
The city.
The city. Now, obviously, apparently, all the setup is gonna cost us some money, and it is your suggestion, when we have a final proposal coming for the council, that until we get into the, to the black, all money go back into the seed fund.
Absolutely.
I think if we can, if we can build a masonry fence around that property so as to make it an improvement to the homeowners who live in that area, as they did in Alamo Heights when the Argyle wanted to put a parking lot smackdown in the middle of a residential area, they had a very nice parking lot there. If we can make this a betterment for the neighborhood, I think this would be a cash cow for the city, but I think we have to make sure we, we make it a betterment for the city.
And along those lines, sir, Balcony's, theirs is built near, a couple of residents, similar to how this location out back would be, and early on, they received one complaint, they haven't received a complaint since.
Be sure to, to stop by and talk with the residential person who's gonna be impacted by this, the most, very agreeable people, and I think they would find it certainly a lot better than what they're looking at now, but I have, that's all.
Douglas, I've, I've also talked to the chief about he and I personally going over to the individuals you're talking about, you know, and remember, we're crawling on this thing, we haven't, we haven't made a decision yet, and we have property other, other places in the state, in the city roundup, that could be put up eight-foot fence around there, and I don't know how many cars could get in there. I guess time will tell, but Johnny, I think these are very, very conservative figures. And, you know, being an optimist, I, I would hope that, of course, you look at it from the law enforcement side, I look at it from the other side. Can we collect a fee if someone comes up at midnight or 1:00 in the morning for late-night retrieval?
I don't know that that's in the statute, I don't recall reading that, but we'll ask Balcony's if they're mitigating that.
I mean, you know, if the next or 200 bucks if they come after 5:00.
We can look into it. We can look into it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak to Mr. Gregory's comment regarding the aesthetics?
Of course, before we move into citizens.
So just as an example regarding aesthetics, Fence Crete has a product that looks like the base of the fire station and the Public Works Department, that red brick that runs about $80 of a linear foot for an eight-foot fence, and the lighting requirements for an impound lot is not like bright spotlight, it's actually a fairly low lighting requirement, so we could have downlighting. So aesthetically, I think it could be an improvement to the construction equipment that's been over there.
Thank you.
Are there any insurance costs related to this?
Yeah, we think it's still under the umbrella of the TML current coverage that we have.
When do you expect to bring this back for a final discussion to the council?
I think paramount to that is getting estimates on the fence, so whatever that would take and whoever champion's that. I could answer that better is my point, I'm not, I'm not sure.
No later than October?
Chief, yeah.
I think, I think there's a couple different things that need to, that have to take place. We need to figure out kind of a conceptual design, at least for the lot, and what the requirements are and come back with a decent estimate for that, and we need to come up with at least a conceptual design for office layouts in here and get somebody to price that out for us, maybe just get a 30% design commission so that somebody can give us a reasonable estimate on what the facility costs would be, because right now, it's just a shot in the dark. We have actually a pretty good set of plans that Barry Middleman drew up back when the cast, when Castle Hills first moved into this building, and that's one of the things we've been referencing. So I need to talk to Mr. Brennan and find out whether or not we can go back to him and see if we can get him to just revise his design slightly, because things have changed a little bit since then, and, and that might be a good place to start and then get a, get an estimate on what that construction would cost. So I think those are the first steps, and the main reason we're bringing this now is because we want to incorporate it into the 2018 budget, so if we get council to approve the concept, we'll roll those numbers salary-wise and everything else into the budget, so it's all accounted for.
Mr. Mayor, can I call for a vote, please?
No, we have a, sure, you can call for it, but we have a citizen to be heard.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Paul, thank you.
Can I make one quick comment while they're coming up? I have some of the statutes here in front of me, Mr. Paul and Mr. Gregory. The lighting, you're concerned about the lighting, it's 250 watts per quarter acre of storage area is what's required, so that's a very low lighting requirement.
Let's, let's move into the citizens to be heard on this item, Leslie Winger?
So I, I did have a long conversation with Wayne about this today, and he told me what the location was because I didn't know what they were considering. I have talked to Fernando Dominguez, and Fernando Dominguez does not like the idea at all. I would ask all of you to consider whether this is something you would like to have next door to you, regardless of a nice brick wall, it doesn't make any difference. He is uphill, if you look at it... He is uphill, if you look at it, the neighbors across the street will see it anyway. He is uphill, and he has a two-story house, so there is no way that he is not going to be seeing all these cars. And I know that Douglas has brought this up to me before about emulating the Argyle. Well, I've been to the Argyle, I'm sure a lot of you have been to the Argyle, there's no way that we're gonna be able to copy that because we don't have that kind of land. This is a small lot. The other lot in Adobe, if you consider that instead, is also a small lot. And people don't like all the activity there. So, how in the world are we going to put this into a residential neighborhood? This is something Douglas brought up at the last meeting, when it came up, why do this in a residential area? When we originally started talking about this kind of stuff, we talked about selling these lots and buying something outside the city of Castle Hills, because we actually don't have anything here. Now, Wayne is talking about not doing asphalt and doing some kind of compressed thing there, which, again, would be hotter than what's there now, so it would add additional heat. But more importantly, we have an ordinance here that we require our residents to abide by, and they have to park on asphalt. We're gonna not obey our own ordinance and tell our residents, no, you can't do that? We had a situation across the street from me where somebody tried to put some compressed stuff down, because it was cheaper, of course, in his driveway. And the city came in and told him he couldn't do it, and he had to pave the whole thing. So how do we make people abide by the ordinance that we have for a very good reason, and they say, oh, we don't have to do it ourselves? Then we have another issue, and that is that if we're bringing this here, then we're giving up the income, you know, and maybe we'll make more money, maybe we won't, we'll wait and see. But what kind of people are gonna be coming here? Has anybody thought about that? Who are these people, whose cars are being towed? I know I see them very occasionally in my neighborhood, you know, off the access road, when I get off that way, there's a car that's left, and that car has to be towed. Every once in a while, I see somebody, you know, coming to the car, and they're not always, you know, the nicest people. We can't stop them from coming into our street if they're looking for a place, you know, to get off the access road. But if they're gonna be coming in here on a residential street, it's not necessarily gonna be what we want here. So I think these are all things that need to be considered before you think about moving forward, because there's a lot of ways to make money, this isn't necessarily the right way for Castle Hills. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Okay. We have a, Mr. Paul, you had a comment right before we went into the citizens to address this?
Yes, I was asking, I was calling for a vote.
Yes, sir, okay, we have a motion, and we have a second on the table. Yes, Amy?
Do you read the motion again, please?
Yes.
Many?
Oh. Consider by minute entry approval of the concept for a vehicle storage impound lot in association staff and facilities. So this is a concept, okay? It was--
Still a final vote to be had.
Excuse me?
It will be still a final vote to be had.
That's the way I read this, Mr. Brennan, this is a concept, okay. Okay, good. We have a motion on the table by Ms. McLean, we have a second by Ms. Scott. Let's do a roll call vote. Douglas? Frank? Sammy? Ms. McLean?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Trevino?
Aye.
Item passes. Thank you, council, let's move on to the next item. Consider an Act and Ordinance Number 20170822A establishing a schedule of fees for various city permits, city licenses, and city services. Mr. Vandewalde?
Yes, I cut Janet loose because I didn't want her to rack up any more comp time, so this is really her bailiwick, so you'll forgive me if I'm not eloquent on it. But this also came out of our budget discussions, as we were determining what our incomes were gonna be and so on and so forth, it became apparent that we were actually losing money on some of our, some of the permit fees that we're charging. Let me explain that, we charge a fifty-dollar permitting fee, that's what we pay the inspector, so we were not getting any reimbursement for any of our staff activities that were associated with these. And we use that same logic as we went through to say, okay, we need to cover somehow the staff costs. Now let me be clear that we are not trying to make revenue, we're not turning this into a revenue generator, that is not allowable by law. This is just to cover the city's costs so that this program is not bleeding. So that's what you see primarily in the fee schedule that is placed before you. And I am willing to discuss any and all of these if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vandewalde. Let's get a motion and a second on the table so we can move forward discussion. Do you have a motion for this item, please? Mr. Paul, do we have a second? With Mr. Gregory. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second on the table, let's start to the left. Mr. Trevino, do you have any questions for the item on the table, please?
Yes, sir, for Mr. Vandewalde, can you tell us specifically which were some of the items that were the biggest, I guess, were costing the money, city the most money?
Primarily those up at the top, where it's been scored through for sixty dollars and been changed to sixty dollars. Those were the ones where we were paying, we were basically receiving the same permit fee as what we were paying the inspector to go out and do the initial inspection on. And we just weren't covering any staff administrative costs at all in handling those. So those are the primary ones, and then that same logic applies throughout. I mean, the expedite plan review is something that we've been charging, and that's simply because the developers come in and they want us to expedite their plan reviews. So we charge them a hundred-and-fifty-dollar fees to move them to the front of the queue, and they're happy to pay it. And again, the rest of these are just, they're literally to cover our city costs, which also includes the staff time and the admin time associated with taking care of them.
That's it this time, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Trevino. Ms. Scott, did you have any questions for the item on the table, please?
I did. The one that bothered me a little bit, and this is a very small fee, but it's the painted house numbers on residential curbs. I had no idea that I needed a permit to paint house numbers on my curb. But it's a ten-dollar fee. That seems a bit excessive, and I asked some of the city personnel, you know, people come in and they find out, yeah, I wanna paint the numbers on my curb, which, after my ride-along with the police department, and I realize how difficult it is sometimes to find house numbers because they're not painted on the curb, they're not easily visible. And this is something good, we want people to paint their house numbers on their curb. So I had a suggestion on that, is perhaps charge a dollar permit fee just so they're coming in and we can give them the information on the size and the color of the paint and where to place it. And that dollar just covers the cost of the employees and coughing off that information and handing it out to them, rather than charging ten dollars, because if I came in and they said, to paint your curbs, you're gonna have to pay ten dollars, I'd say, thanks, no thanks, and walk away. But if I paid a dollar and was handed a lovely printout on exactly where to put my numbers, how to paint them. So that was just an idea suggestion I had there on that. But I think it's very important for safety and to help our police fire department, EMTs locate houses quickly when time is of the essence.
And I think that's a laudable idea, that one dollar would not cover the staff time, but I think you get a trade-off there, because it does help first responders and helps our residents. So that's one of those things that I think council would consider, if you wanted to change it to a dollar, just so we can track who's painted, you know, who's filed the permits, who's gone out and painted them, and so on and so forth. I mean, I'd definitely be amenable of that, simply because it does help our first responders in doing their job and getting out to the residents.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, Ms. McLean?
I do have one thing, there was some discussion in one of the budget meetings about what to do with all of the extra time that the sanitation workers are taking. Where they walk up to people's houses, they have their red barrels, and I see them every morning when I bring the kids to school. And I feel like we're probably not adequately recovering the expense of the time that we are spending to give the extra service. And I feel like we need to have Rick or you or somebody work on some kind of concierge service to where certainly, I love the concept of them coming up to the doors, but I feel like it is taking a toll on our employees. And so if we could come up with something that seems like a reasonable reimbursement for the city for that extra service, you know, and have it be something that a resident could pay for, and if you pay for it, then you get it and you have some CH or something that we paint on the curb, so they know where to stop and who has that specific service. That's just one thing that I see missing on the fee schedule.
Mr. Brennan, if she decides to bring that forward, she could include that into an amendment to the-- thank you, thank you, to the motion. Mr. Paul?
I was trying to find it, I remember years ago, we had a, excuse me, we had a an ordinance that told us we couldn't do orange and white, or maroon and white, seriously, on the street. I have a neighbor that did orange and white, I don't care, but I thought we had something like that, you aware of anything still? I mean, it's been a while.
I'll have to get back to you on that one. Maroon and white is definitely approved, though, council.
Oh, of course it is. But, well, to draw this to a conclusion, then, it seems to me like if there is still no restriction on what color you could do and things like that, I don't even know why we have to have a permit. It just wastes a lot of time and effort and energy. Yes, Rick, you got something? No what?
So Rick's saying, no logos, no--
So Revoli can't show up anywhere?
No.
Well, then why do we--
Revoli, no Bevo. No Baylor Bears, sorry, council.
Can we make an amendment to this, and I mean, I think Ms. Scott has a good thought there, why do we even charge the-- I mean, why even have them come in, unless there's a necessity? I don't worry about it, I have it on my mailbox, and it's pretty clear. But is there any need that you're aware of, or that's been brought up, of why we need a permit for them to paint their own sign?
Other than tracking and establishing some kind of a standard, which is probably where that, it's probably on the form itself. I think it probably doesn't hurt, now, I guarantee our code compliance officer's not gonna go up there and write somebody up if they put something out there unless if it is outlandish, or, you know, has a Duke Blue Devil on it, or something like that.
Good point, we need to be uniform regardless of the color. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Paul? I'm sorry. On the fee schedule here, it does state that the house numbers painted on the curb should be a black background, no longer than six inches by nine inches wide, six inches tall, with four-inch white luminous numbers, meaning they glow. Luminous numbers, no other colors, no logos or symbols shall be permitted, according to the fee schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory, do you have any comments on this item, please?
There goes the Duke Blue Devils that I would have on my thing. I'll start with the most amusing thing here, a noise permit. We actually have a permit to make noise?
Yes, so if you're gonna have a party at your house and have exterior music or something like that, you have to file a noise permit, yes.
But we don't charge for it, or do we? No, we don't charge for that.
I think a lot of that is so we're tracking who's doing what out there, so if somebody--
That makes sense. What's an SOB?
A what?
Sexually orientated business, sir.
A what?
A sexually orientated business.
I'm having no comment on that. Tree trimming permit. Now, I actually have had people really complain about this, that they can't go out and get their trees trimmed without getting a permit. Is this, Mr. Brennan and Mr. Vandewalde, is this the norm in suburban cities nowadays?
I don't know if you'd say it's the norm, but it's a good regulation, it's a good permit, because there are a lot of tree trimming outfits that pass through cities or areas. And they can, if they're not regulated, they can be sloppy. They can leave the debris or the limbs that they cut there at the residence for the city to pick up instead of taking them off like they're supposed to. They can cause a lot of problems, and you want reputable tree trimming companies doing business in your city. It's an area of activity that if you don't have reputable permitted-type people doing it, you can have lots of problems.
Well, you know, I agree with you on that. There is one thing, though, it used to be, and I think it's slightly less now, on the weekends, the city was considered just wide open. Because no one would really go by to check who are they hacking away the trees with, because just wide open. Is there, would you suggest that we limit the days that a tree trimming permit can be given, and you can trim your trees by, I guess you wouldn't want to, because--
Just to address that, our new code compliance officer does go out on weekends.
Really?
Yes, he absolutely does, we talked about that when he signed up for the job, and so he goes out for a few hours virtually every weekend and scours the city and sees what kind of illegal yard sales are going on, or if somebody's out there doing work without a permit. So he gets a gold star for that, but he has been doing that.
That's new information. Do any other residential cities charge for a CFA certificate of occupancy? Mr. Brennan and Mr. Vandewalde?
Sure. Those are complicated in nature, you need to charge for those, because--
We have no charge for ours.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one.
Commercial's a hundred and fifty--
What was that, what was that?
Commercial certificate of occupancy is a hundred and fifty, residential is zero.
I know we do commercial, we do send, because we send the billing inspector, we send the fire inspector out, we send the health inspector if it's a food or, you know, related operation. So I know we do commercial for residential, I'd have to check with Janet, should we be charging?
Mr. Brennan, why don't we require a certificate of occupancy? Don't most cities do that for houses?
Not really, not for residential properties, and that may be why we have zero. I think there's only a limited number of times that you need a CFO for a residential property, and--
To make sure the utilities are on, and to make sure, who makes sure of that?
Yeah, you know, when you construct a residence or do a renovation on a residence, the building people have to check it. And I think you're just not charging as a matter of convenience for the public.
Okay, so anybody could move into a house and not turn the utilities on, I'm not being facetious, I'm just asking.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Oh, okay, okay.
Are what we charging maxed out by state code? And if the state says you can charge X, are we charging X?
The state codes don't normally tell you what you can charge for various kind of permits. There's just the general rule that a permit fee is supposed to bear a reasonable relationship to the amount of activity the city has to expend to accomplish the object.
I wanna say one thing about it, I heard from Ms. Councilwoman McLean. She mentioned something I think is an up-and-coming thing. My doctor, I have a great doctor, he went to MDVIP. This is the concierge doctor type thing. And you charge who knows, but he knows every single doctor from here to next Christmas, so you know who to go to if something's wrong. I like Mrs. McLean's suggestion that we, I think we ought to investigate further. Concierge service, in lieu of all these various fees that we charge everybody, residential people, we can charge them quarterly for a concierge, and define what that is. I think that might be a really interesting way to, well, it would be different for our city, and it might really bring in a lot of revenue, and it might really--
Are we talking about for going up and picking up the trash and things like that?
Yeah, I think we'd have to really barnstorm as to what exactly would concierge service provide.
Maybe we could have some kind of clause in there where if it was, you know, a person was incapacitated, we waive those concierge fees and allow them to do it?
Yes, yes, but I think it's a very interesting concept, and I like the idea.
I have two things that I wanted to ask. One is the food--
I have, um, two things that I wanted to ask. Um, one is the food reinspection fee, is it $50? Is that enough to recover our expenses for our health inspector's time? Because it just seems like with the reports that I've seen with the bills that go with them, that $50 is probably not adequate. And so I'm wondering if we need to look at our annual licenses to make sure we're actually covering our expenses.
No doubt. Last month, he did four and charges $1,450.
You're talking about the food inspector?
Yes.
The, um, some of those would be the annual license. So there's, there's more hefty, um, more hefty fi, uh, not fines, but fees at the top for an annual license for less than three employees. For instance, a hundred dollars. That goes up to more than 10 employees, $750. But what you're saying is a food reinspection fee.
Right.
And that probably falls, now Homer is not, he doesn't charge the same rates as our billing inspectors do. It probably falls in that same category. So if you'll give me the license to take a look at it and talk to Janet and find out what Homer's charging us, and then we'll go back and, and take a look and make sure that that fee is, is in the right category. I know a lot of times, for instance, we charge a little bit heftier reinspection fee up on the top for permits, for, um, for construction. And the reason is, is because they call out for the billing inspector before they're ready to be inspected. And they're, they're trying to get ahead of it. And so we wait, the inspector wastes time going out there. He makes a, a trip out there. He doesn't get anything done. So if he has to go back, there's a little bit of a penalty that's associated with that because there's a lot of rework, plus it drives the ladies crazy closing out their drawer at the windows and stuff like that. So it, it adds time to their schedule. So that, that makes sense. I don't know if the same applies on the food reinspection.
Well, and I mean, our goal is to make sure that we have safe places for our residents and other people to eat. But I'm wondering how long we've, we've gone with looking at what our fees are in this particular service fee category versus what we spend on our expenses on the health inspector. Because every month, it seems like it's been about $1,200 to $1,400. And it's only five, six establishments with a couple of reinspections. And I don't know what kind of schedule we have. So, and maybe this is something we can look at next year. I mean, maybe it's too much in the weeds for, for this time. But I'm just curious if our fees are actually, I mean, whether we could justify having a higher fee for some of those things. And then the other one, um, I noticed the residential garbage fee under other fees is $25 a month. And I guess this would, um, be Rick's domain in how long has it been since we've looked at that fee? And does that really, is that really our living wage for, for collecting just garbage when people put it on the curb? Not, not taking into account the, the extra effort that the fellows go into, and I applaud them every day when I see them. But, um, I also see that as being a tax on our employees.
Rick, when's the last time this fee was changed? So it was changed two years ago? And I think what, what, what Councilman McLean is recommending is that we would change, that we would add another category for the concierge service for people that are able-bodied but still want the pickup at their house. And the reason that is, is because that, that extra little bit of time for each one of those houses takes those guys away from their other duties. Because unlike the city of San Antonio, our sanitation workers, after they're done riding the truck, they go to work out on our streets, they go to work clearing brush, they go do everything else that the city has to do. So it takes them away from other tasks when they're going to people, up to people's houses to empty their garbage into that red can.
Well, and as part of that, speaking to what Mr. Gregory said earlier, that the concept of that service would be if you have somebody that's got a handicap placard on their car, if they could bring that in, then obviously we'll make accommodations for someone who can show that they are disabled or have a medical, medical reason to have different services.
Thank you, Amy. Um, anybody else, uh, Ms. Scott?
I did. I, I wanted to go back to the tree trimming, um, permit. I think it is very, very important to have the tree trimming permit, particularly for our oak trees, because I know not everyone is aware, but oak wilt is now in Castle Hills. And it is a threat to our oak trees. I live over on Prince Drive. We are currently treating our trees for oak wilt. It moves about 100 feet per year and it is slowly inching its way across the edge. Next thing you know, it's going to be jumping Northwest Military. It's going to be on this side of Northwest Military. It's moving this direction. And when you have those fly-by-night tree trimmers that go in and they're trimming, when the beetles that spread this, um, it's a fungus.
Which is now?
Um, and it gets on the beetles. And as soon as the cut happens, within minutes, those beetles are attracted to the cut, they're burrowing into it, and you've just spread oak wilt further than that 100 feet. It travels a year through the roots, you've spread it, however far those beetles have flown into that cut. So it's very important. Um, and if you want to price out the treatment for oak wilt for your oak trees, um, I can tell you it's in the multiple, multiple thousands of dollars per tree, depending on the diameter of the tree, in particular if you have some two, 300-year-old oaks like we do in our yard. So it's imperative, I think, to keep that tree ordinance on there. And eventually, the city itself is going to have to look at the oak wilt situation. Thank you.
Ms. Scott, a number of years ago, I think, uh, there were two people here, uh, on council, uh, Mr. Gregory and myself, when we ran into that situation on your street, actually before it jumped over from San Antonio. Uh, I can remember sitting there and wondering whether we need to pay $30,000 to trench. You remember that? And we decided, we decided not to do that at the time. And, uh, Mr. Bueller, uh, two houses in on the left, uh, treated his trees and, uh, thousands and thousands of dollars. And then we had, uh, people with the home remedy of the cornmeal out there, uh, around the bottom of the tree, which brought in more doves and, yeah, I'll tell you, it was a place to go dove hunting, I'll tell you. But anyway, uh, it's very, it's-
And treating the tree does not guarantee that it is not going to die. It just gives it a little bit better chance of not contracting oak wilt. You still have a chance it can die. And the treatment itself can cause toxic shock in the tree and kill the tree as well.
So right now, you've gone, um, approximately 100 yards into Castle Hills now, since, since we talked about that. They live about half the block in on Prince. What I'd like to hear, and I don't know if she's prepared to not knight, because I'm, I'm pulling her out of the sky, is Leslie went up, Leslie and I had a conversation regarding, uh, the new, uh, bill. Okay, it's okay. All right, sorry. Didn't mean to embarrass you like that. I just wanted, oh, well, I'm sorry I embarrassed myself. Okay, we were having a conversation regarding, uh, what the state is doing regarding heritage trees and things like that. But we really need to stick with that tree ordinance. And I, and I'll tell you what I'm in favor of. I'll let the elephant in the room. What, what I'm in favor of is, you know, you go to Blossom Hills, you go to other things where they semi-require you to put something on the, uh, sidewalk, I mean, on the curb. So, so when they come through, some kind of reflective paint, they have a choice. The HOA or something, uh, has a, you can put a Marine symbol there. You can put an American flag. Of course, now, uh, in this day and age, they're, they're rethinking that because some people are putting Confederate flags as, you know, and all this kind of thing. So the point I'm getting at is, I, I really like that concierge idea. Uh, and then anybody who, uh, we, uh, see that they can't afford it, or they're, they're invalid, or they just simply come in and say, I need somebody to come to the front. Then we could, we could mark the curb for Rick and his guys in order to do that. And, uh, I don't think the, I don't think the public would mind that at all. I think in situations where, I know on my street, if any, well, I, I know on my street that if, if we had that, that probably the neighbors would pay for the person who needed it, uh, on a monthly basis. So, but not, not put a burden on the, on the people, but actually help them for a change. Okay, with that said, is there anybody else that had any comments on these various permits or wanted to put any amendments into the permits as we move, uh, forward? Because it is an action item. Okay, we had a motion, is that correct? Many? Okay, and we had a second, to consider an act upon ordinance number 2017-08-22A, establishing a scheduled fee for various city permits, city licenses and services. Uh, all in favor?
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Are we voting to accept the fees as is, or are we going to-
Yes. I ask if there was any amendments to the, uh, item. And I didn't hear anybody say anything.
My apologies. I did have an amendment to drop the paint, uh, the painted house numbers from $10 to $1.
Okay, we have an amendment by Ms. Scott to, uh, to the original motion. This will be an amendment to the item to drop the fee for the-
For the painted house numbers?
Painted house numbers from $10 to $1. We have a motion on the table by Ms. Scott.
Mayor, I would second that, but I'd also like to make a motion regarding a concierge service. And I was searching for my numbers.
Let's do them one at a time, okay? But thank you for that thought. Okay, so I heard you second that second, I heard you second that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. So we have a, uh, an amendment item, and we have a second for that item. Uh, any discussion? Okay, thank you. Uh, Douglas, did, did you want to say anything about this item? $10 to $1. Frank, you're good. I know you're good. I know you're good. Ms. Trevino? Okay, I know you're good. All in favor of the amendment to the, uh, original motion? It's unanimous. So we made the $10 fee go down to $1. And let's go back to the original motion, please, which was, as I read, on item number eight. Uh, that was establish the fees for the various permits. I've read it twice, so I don't think I have to read it again. So all in, is there anybody else who would like to add an amendment to the thing? Ms. McLean?
I would like to make an amendment to add a concierge gar, garbage service for people who would like to have their trash picked up from their door or their garage. Um, and I cannot find my notes where I had dabbled with an amount for that. Um, suppose maybe Rick could help with this. Um, or can we leave that open-ended and just add a line item for it?
Mr., don't you think we should go ahead and establish the fee amount? Because then we're going to have to come back and redo it.
Okay, so I, I would like to make a, a motion that we add a $25 concierge service for people who would like to have individual garbage pickup at, not at their curb, um, unless they can show a handicap placard to the office to show that they are disabled.
Okay, so we have a motion to add an amendment to having a concierge service, which will go to the, uh, door, uh, go to, up to, um, what we're doing right now. Do we need to put a fee? Wow. Do we need to put a fee on that? She did?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five feet?
It would just be, no, not, no, you're saying a distance? $50 fee.
Is that every month?
No, it would be $25. It would be an extra $25 each month.
Okay.
Each month?
Each month.
Okay.
Discussion? Yeah.
Hang on, Rick. Hang on just a second, okay? It hadn't passed. You may not have to ask it.
I would also like to add a handicap placard sometimes. Could a doctor's note, handicap placard, or a note from a physician?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
I think a comment is due at this time.
I'd like to have it so that it's anybody over 65.
Uh, hang on, girl. Hang on, Leslie. I mean, Ms. Brennan, can we hang on just for a second? Yes, ma'am, I'll recognize you in just a moment, okay? Your original was to do this, uh, concierge, uh, fee, uh, open-ended for $25. Is that correct? If they could show that, that they have a handicap?
Well, $25 to anyone who wanted it. But if you can show that you are handicapped, doctor's notes or your placard that you hang in your car, that that fee would be waived since you have a disability that would, that would be a nice service for the city to give you if you're disabled and cannot take your garbage out. If you're over 65 and you can walk and take your garbage to the curb, then you need to pay this fee if you want to have a special service.
Do we have a second, just so we can get into discussion?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we have a motion and we have a second. Let's go to the, uh, audience real quick. Leslie?
I don't know how you're going to do that, because if you get Saws to collect that extra money, it's going to cost you plenty.
They get 4%.
Because they're going to have to redo their whole computer system back and forth. So it may not be worth it.
Good point. Thanks. Rick? I have an idea. Let me, let me ask you a question. Leslie's right about that billing thing. You get, you get involved with Saws and you're, you're entering into a, a, a cluster situation.
Well, and this would be, this would be how you handle that, is that this is a service the city is offering, so the resident would need to come in. So we have a record that that property is part of this, and we just send them a bill or they pay it.
Or maybe you put a little sticker in the window or something?
Or you put a sticker in the window, or we paint something on their curb. Um, because what I see every morning that I take my kids to school is Rick's guys zigzagging across Honeysuckle, picking up almost every single person's house garbage from their garage or the front of their house. And there is wear and tear on our employees that, that has caused some physical damage to them in the last couple of months. And so that is part of the reason why I feel like we need, we need to address this issue. I love that we have very thoughtful workers in Public Works, but it's causing them physical harm.
This came up during the budget about how much time we spend as far as that concerned. Now we're talking about and in discussion with, uh, the amendment to the original motion. Douglas?
By the very length of time we're discussing this, demonstrates to me it's a little more complex than we originally thought. I would hope we might consider tabling this and give this some thought and bring it back next month to really flesh out the things. I had forgotten Leslie's right about that fee. Wrestle the, wrestle the fee from Saws, good luck. But I, I think another, a, a month to, to determine exactly what this is going to be.
You're talking about the amendment or not the complete item, right?
The whole, the whole item. I think, I think we've got a, instead of rushing it through, we can, we can bring it back as an individual item next month. Probably wouldn't take more than 10 minutes.
Okay, well, that's, uh, we, we have a motion on the table. Now we're in the middle of the amendment.
Discussion.
We have a, uh, Mr. Paul, did you want to speak about the amendment to the motion?
Yeah, um, I agree with Douglas. Um, I think in general, it's a good idea to, I don't think we should be picking up everybody's. I don't want people to come pick mine up, even though I am over 50. But, um, that being said, like Douglas said, it is going to be taken some consideration and everything into effect. And just as importantly, we need to get with Rick before anything like this is brought forward, so we can get the practical side of it.
Okay, now remember, we're just talking about the amendment now.
Amendment, that's, yeah, the extra $25, yeah.
Amy, I know where you stand. Did you want to say anything else?
No.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Scott?
Are we continue to discuss the amendment?
Only the amendment.
Or only the amendment? Uh, my suggestion to the amendment, eventually, whether we end up talking about it again further or later, would not be involve Saws, but have it as a permit through the city of Castle Hills. It'd just be a permitting fee that would go through the permitting department and not involve Saws.
Mr. Trevino?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's vote on the amendment to the original, uh, motion.
Mr. Mayor?
No, the amendment to the original motion. Is to add the concierge service for $25. Okay? All in favor?
Twenty-five a month.
Twenty-five a month, right. All in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I?
May I? I would like to postpone, um...
You want to withdraw your motion?
Yes, I'll withdraw the motion and bring it up next month.
Thank you very much. Okay, the, it was withdrawn, so the, actually, the vote doesn't have to take place. Let's go back to the original motion and the second, which is on the table regarding, uh, establishing a fee schedule for the various city permits. Uh, we've had discussion, we've also had a little bit of, uh, uh, discussion out in the public. So with that said, all in favor?
Mister Mayor, excuse me just a minute, sorry. What did we do about Ms. Scott's dollar as opposed to ten dollars?
It's already passed.
Well, it must have been while I was in the other room.
Oh, could have been, thanks. How did you vote on that, Mister Paul?
I voted, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good, alright. Alright, we, uh, again, we're voting on item number eight, which is to set the schedule fees for the city. We've had discussion and then some. With that said, all in favor? And it is unanimous. Uh, I would suggest that maybe council, uh, whoever wants to bring back that, we can amend anything, of course, as we, as we move forward on that concierge service. And, uh, so the, really, the only thing that changed was we're charging a dollar instead of ten dollars for the curb, um, painting thing. Alright, let's move on to item nine, which is consider and act upon ordinance number two oh one seven dash oh eight two two B, amending chapter thirty-eight, streets and sidewalks and other public places, repealing article nine, uh, six, work in right-of-way and adopting chapter forty-nine, work in right-of-way and adopting article one, work in the right-of-way. Mister Vandewalde?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, item nine and ten really go together. Uh, they are separate ordinances, but they're, they, they started, the genesis of both of them is the same, uh, event. Uh, the last legislature enacted a, a brand-new chapter to the local government code called, uh, chapter two eighty-four, which regulates, uh, small cell technology. And small cell technology is apparently the wave of the future for, uh, tele- telecommunications in, in the world, I guess. The city has had, uh, a small cell company knocking on its door now for the past year trying to get the city to let it install a small cell tower on West Avenue. And there has never really been any authorization in the law to do that. And, uh, every time it's come up, we've kind of just passed on it because, uh, there didn't seem to be any benefit to the city for doing that. So the small cell industry cleverly went straight to the legislature this past time and got a very complex, complicated new law enacted that authorizes small, or makes mandatory that cities accept small cell technology in their right-of-way. Uh, it, it was, uh, passed, uh, in May, or as of May thirty-first. It was one of the last bills that passed. It goes into effect on September first of twenty-seventeen, so goes into effect in a couple of weeks, I guess. And if you don't have regulations in effect, then you have no control over what the small cell, uh, uh, outfits do or, or do. They can put them anywhere, they don't have to pay you a fee, they don't have to get permits, they don't have to do anything unless you have a regulatory structure in place. So, uh, TML or one of the state boards, uh, hired a law firm to come up with ordinances, a design manual, contracts and so forth that cities in the state could use to regulate, uh, small cell, uh, uh, technology and structures. Uh, that's what is in chap, uh, our, uh, agenda item number ten. Now, when we were reconstructing our code, uh, there was a section in the, in former chapter thirty-eight, uh, that's called street sidewalks and other public places. Uh, and a part of that regulated management of the rights-of-way of the city. And Janet felt like, and I think correctly so, that if we were gonna adopt the new regulations for the new chapter two eighty-four of the local government code, that we ought to consolidate our prior chapter, our part of chapter that regulated the maintenance, um, the street management of the rights-of-way and put them into one new chapter. So what number nine does is it lifts, uh, article six out of chapter twenty-eight, or thirty-eight, I mean, and moves it to a new chapter forty-nine, uh, work in the right-of-way. There's no change in it, there's no new innovations, no new wording, no new rules, regulations. It's just a transfer of article six, uh, from chapter thirty-eight to a new chapter, uh, forty-nine. And then the next article or agenda item number ten adds a second part to the new chapter forty-nine, which is the regulatory structure for the new small cell technology, which is amazingly complicated. So, uh, so anyway, we're recommending that the, the, the code be restructured to some degree to, to put both parts of the, uh, maintenance in the right-of-way into one new chapter forty-nine. And it'll be comprised of a transfer of article six from former, uh, from existing chapter thirty-eight and the new wording for, uh, chapter, uh, two eighty-four from the local government code. Uh, they'll be consolidated in new chapter forty-nine.
So Mister Brennan, uh, with all that said and that, so by doing this, are we gonna be able to go ahead and charge our fees and our money and everything we need to do?
Yes, the, the state law, uh, they did a real number with the legislature this year and they've set, uh, there's dozens of fees that are specifically in the statute that are set by state law now, uh, our maximum fees that you can charge. This new regulation adopts all the fee schedules that the state approved. And, uh...
Okay.
If you don't do this, you don't get to charge any fees.
Got it, done. Alright.
Mister Mayor, I make a motion that we approve, uh, item number nine.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Second by Douglas. We have motion by Mister Paul, second by Douglas. Let's do, uh, open it up for discussion. Did everybody kind of understand what, uh, he was talking about? Okay, Douglas, you're okay, Frank, yes?
Okay, so I have read through this. And, um, the only problem I have with number nine that we're looking at tonight is formatting. And so formatting is really the only problem that I see where, um, there are parentheticals that don't line up. And I always notice those things. So subject, that's really the only comment I have on this would be approving it subject to some formatting fixes.
Okay, well, we'll format along. Okay.
Yeah, there wouldn't be any substantive changes, uh, Councilman McLean, just...
Right, I know, exactly.
Formatting, okay, corrections, okay.
Alright, we'll just format along. Uh, you okay? Mister Trevino? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second on the table, all in favor of nine moving forward? Yes, thank you very much, it is, uh, approved. Let's go to ten, consider and act upon ordinance two oh one seven dash oh eight two two dash C, uh, amending chapter forty-nine of, and adopting article two, public right-of-way management for wireless network providers. I think this is just something that we need to do for formality, is that correct?
Well, it's the new regulation and new regulatory structure for chapter two eighty-four of the local government code, these small cell antennas.
Okay.
It's, it's a, it's a whole new ballgame.
One question and, and, uh, you know, we've already voted on the other one. Let's get this vote out of the way and then we'll go from there. Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
There you go. Okay, uh, what I want to find out is, are they gonna be digging and things like that or this overhead?
Uh, they can trench, uh, and they can install overhead on existing towers or poles, uh, put in new towers or poles. Uh, they can do, there, there's some kind of antennas that are now being used that are like a web between two wires. And, you know, they were, this new law regulates how, how big that web can be. So there's all kinds of stuff that you've never seen before, probably.
Hmm, alright. Well, okay, so we have an, we have the motion, uh, item ten on the table. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Discussion.
Yes, okay, go ahead. Douglas?
Well, this looks like the Nancy Pelosi bill. Uh, pass it. I have, I have, I, I tried to struggle through this. I need somebody to, really, who understands to explain it to me because I don't understand what we're about to vote on. And perhaps we have one attorney who, who can do this and another one who can second-guess our attorney on the council. I just, I, I, I can't, I have no idea how to vote on this thing because I'm not really sure what is doing.
This basically, I equate this to the same thing that the council did with the traffic impact analysis where it's time-sensitive. We have to do something by the first of September, otherwise we take whatever, whatever gets shoved down our throats by these small cell towers. Um, so a good answer today is better than a perfect answer on September second or even September first, because that's when the Senate bill goes into effect. You're basically just out-maneuvering the state, um, uh, legislature in some regards. But even so, it still limits a little bit the power of the municipality to regulate what is being put in your city and charge fees on what's being put in your city with regard to these small, uh, wireless network facilities. They're coming, they've been knocking on our door already, we've been putting them off. As soon as September first comes, they're gonna be here saying, here's our proposal, you know, take it or leave it, and we'll be able to assess fees based on the good work that Mister Brennan and Miss Janet Thielen have done on our behalf and reaching out to TML and getting this legislation in place. Other small cities that may not be as forward-thinking and have the forward-thinking staff that we do will just, they won't be able to charge fees, they won't be able to regulate, they won't be able to do anything.
Douglas, would you, would it be proper for you, i- if you're not sure? You know, we just passed the item nine, which is right above it.
Well, nine of nine was a lot simpler.
Well, then why don't, uh...
But this is a little, this is a lot more complicated.
Well, I understand, but, uh, it sounds like we're on a deadline here. And, uh, would you abstain and then get with Mister Brennan? Then we come back and I will promise you an executive session if you see something that needs to be changed.
Mayor, could we go through all the discussion and see if we answer some of Mister Gregory's questions?
Okay. Oh, that's fine, okay. Mister Paul?
Yes, this is the item that, uh, you said that TML, uh, went out, got some attorneys and did what they could to help protect the cities in these items.
Now, this, this, I don't want to say that, that I or any other lawyer around drew this up. Uh, this was prepared at the request of TML, uh, or a, another similar state entity who paid a fee to a lawyer who's a utility expert to prepare this regulation to mesh with or comply with this new chapter two eighty-four. Uh, as far as I can tell, uh, they did a great job.
I skimmed through it and, of course, like Douglas, there's a lot of stuff that I wasn't sure of. I'd probably have to read it ten times to make sure. But it's also one of those things that if we really find that we had an issue with something, we can always come back and change something. This gets us going for September one.
And we, we can have experts come, the, you know, to me, this is an engineering, uh, feat. It's not really as much a legal fee as it, as an engineering fee. And we can have experts come and, and talk to us about it, explain it to us. And there are gonna be seminars, uh, conducted around the region, as I understand it, uh, in the very near future to go with this, cities with this, so they can explain it, try to understand it. The biggest problem I think that we're gonna have with this is not this ordinance or not the regulation, but the implementation of it. Uh, and when I first sent my, the draft over to Kurt, I said, you know, we're gonna have to have an, hire an engineer to work for the city to, uh, to, to handle the applications that we're gonna get on this that do understand all the technical stuff in here. Uh, uh, they believe that Mr., that the billing inspector, uh, or the code compliance officer, uh, has good knowledge or some kind of special knowledge about this topic and can be a big help to us in, in administering the program.
Are we gonna be sending him to school? Is that what we're gonna do?
Well, I, I don't know yet. You know, it's not clear exactly, uh, how, how he's gonna get educated on it. It would take a lot of education for me to get up to speed on this thing. Uh, it's really complicated.
I would think the process would be, uh, one or two of them, you walk through it and you learn what's going on and then adapt to it and see what goes on. But again, it protects us, we can change things.
That's correct.
So my general summary is that, of this, as I read through it several times, was that basically it's just protecting us as a city. It's requiring them to obtain permits, it's requiring them to have liability coverage, it's requiring them to pay certain fees, it's requiring them to respect any historic areas, it's requiring them to respect our parks, it's requiring them to respect our residential areas. It's laying out and protecting the city from these, uh, companies that wanna come in and put these nodes, these network nodes in. And it's protecting us for them being able to put them in willy-nilly wherever they want. It spells out where they can do it, when they can do it, what permits they need, what liability they need, all of those things.
Including heights and things like that that are important. You're absolutely correct, everything you said is right on.
So this is a piece of, um, a handbook for the city that is going to protect us from these companies coming in and walking all over us.
That's exactly right.
And if we find things as we go through them that need to be corrected, we can then amend them.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have some substantive things that I found in going through it. Um, so this is a package of four documents and the first question I had is on page nine of the ordinance. Up at the very top, it's D, transfer facility, first, transfer facilities. When you get to the agreement that we are having these companies sign with us, it uses the word transport facility. And so in going back and forth to make sure that the fees were the same in our ordinance versus a contract we're asking them to sign, I noticed the difference of terminology. So I'm, I just wanna make sure that we're using the right terms in the document.
You're comparing transfer fee and transport fee?
Transfer facilities, and then the word transport is used on page seventeen of the agreement. And I don't know which is right. I mean, it was a little bit like Greek, but once I started reading through it, there were a lot of repetition, there was a lot of repetition and so it became clearer to me what we were, I mean, how we're protecting ourselves. But globally in the ordinance, I also see some formatting issues besides just making sure that that's a transfer facility. That was my only comment besides formatting. In the pole attachment agreement that we have, it's the next document in the packet, on the very last page, page three, in item ten, the venue shall lie in Shepherd, San Jacinto County. I don't wanna be in San Jacinto County, I wanna be in Bear County.
That needs to be corrected, absolutely. And I, I thought we'd corrected that, I don't know how that ended up there still.
And that's okay, because I know when you're going through these, it's hard to catch everything. But, um, that was the change that I saw there. And I don't know, um, since we're approving the documents, if we want to leave it blank and just have city manager rather than naming the city secretary and city manager, since these are documents that we are, that we're adopting. I would potentially leave out the names or whatever your recommendation is on that. So the next one in the design manual, um, on page five, where we're talking about definitions, manager means the manager for the City of Castle Hills. It should be manager means the city manager. I believe in the rest of the document, it actually says city manager. Um, so we may even want to change that and move it up into the Cs and call it city manager means city manager. That would just be a formatting preference.
I thought we'd fix that too, but we'll get it fixed.
That's okay. Extra I's. Um, and then on this one, I did notice some formatting things too, and I think that's a lot of my post-it notes was formatting. Is not parallel structure where we flip between using As and Bs and one-point-ones and that sort of thing, so it becomes confusing. Um, so if we can check the formatting and make sure that we're staying consistent...
If you'll share that with us, we'll just, we'll fix all that.
Okay, I'll skip past those. The next one, um, I think that was it for the design manual. Then the last, I think the last document we have is the service pole co-location attachment license agreement. And that's the, um, number four, exhibit D. And in this one, I do have some changes. On page six, where we address the parties, leaving those blank as well to where we just reference the city manager, um, and blank information and maybe add phone numbers for both parties so that we have phone contact as well as email contact for both the network provider and licensee and the City of Castle Hills. And, um, in that one-point-one, so we're talking article one, the parties, the initial address of the parties are as follows. And then I would like to see pulling that which are, which either party may change at any time to a one-point-two just so it's taken out and made clear, you know, you can change... you know, you can change your address at another time, but you've got to give written permission, it's kind of buried up in that top, top sentence. And then there's quite a bit of weird formatting in this one too. And I don't know if it's the way mine printed, or if it's just, I know we're in a hurry to get this even considered, so, um, let me see if I had any more thing, anything else substantial. On page sixteen, it's 5.2.1, the annual colocation on service pole attachment fee. That was $20, right? I tried to track the numbers and make sure that we were using the same ones in our ordinance, I think that was right, right? And then the next page, page seventeen, is where the transport facility fee comes in. And that's where, when I went back and checked it with the $28 multiplied by the number of nodes, I noticed the different use of the word "transfer" versus "transport." Then on page twenty-two, 7.2.2, it says "the Newark provider's network node." And I didn't know if that was a proprietary something that we were describing or whether Newark was a word that we needed to replace with, if that was a more location-driven word, or if that's a... Then on page twenty-six, we have "the city has appropriated $0 under this agreement to pay for the cost of any removal or storages of the network node." And it was a zero number, so I didn't know if we... 8.10. Well, if we don't, then that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that zero was what we were looking at, or if we needed to pick a number. I like on page twenty-seven, that one of our termination clauses is a licensee becoming insolvent, so we can deal with them. Then on page thirty-one, in 15.2.4, in the second line, it says, um, "party against the other may be filed until at least..." I'm assuming it means one meeting has occurred between the city manager and the executives of the network provider, but it, we're missing the number of meetings that we need to have. 15.2.4, it's the second line, I think we're just missing... I assumed it would be one, but... Then again on page thirty-five, just, um, under licensee network provider, we listed Kurt, and I don't think he's going to be the, um, person signing off for a licensee, just leaving, leaving that blank and, um, maybe putting a, a place where we insert name of business instead of a blank line. And I think, besides formatting, and this one had quite a few formatting oddities, um, that was all. Thank you.
She gets a gold star for all that, that's all I say.
I guess.
Ms. McLenn, did you have any, uh, comments or questions regarding item ten?
Oh, good, good.
Uh, Mr. Trevino, I'm sure you've got something to say.
I'll make it brief, sir.
Thank you.
I didn't see, how many nodes are they planning on putting? There's no anticipated amount? And the permit fee, does that, uh, fall under working in a right-of-way? So it's $50 for the whole city?
Yeah, I'm not sure, this all falls in the work under, work in the right-of-way, so, and they, yes.
So is, I'm, sorry to be drilling into this, but is it $50 for the whole city for them to do this, or per location? Or is there any language that identifies that?
It was $50 per a certain number of nodes, so I think they had up to like ten or fifteen or thirty nodes, and then they had to pay another fee. I can't remember where it was, but there was a number of nodes per that fee.
That, that was a good response, because that is the way it is, this, you know, the state limited what you could charge, and it was in groups, I think, as she said.
Page eight, um, of the ordinance, under forty-nine dash sixty, number B, the application fee is $100 for each network node for up to, but not more than, thirty network nodes.
Okay, I, uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Brennan, quick question, or maybe, uh, Ms. McLenn can help me. I saw it said somewhere that it's $20 per node, per year. So that's why I'm trying to figure out what the, the difference is.
There may be a difference in, in the application or permit fee as opposed to the monthly or annual charge that you can also collect for the existence of the, of the thing.
I believe I read the $20 was if it was on, and, like, a specific type of pole, they had to pay that additional $20 fee. I read that in there somewhere, that it was, but it was a specific type of pole, that they had to pay that additional $20 fee per node if they wanted to use that pole. And I can't remember the specific type of pole, whether it was one that, that contained traffic lights, or what exactly it needed, but it was a very specific type of pole, and it is in there.
Page nine.
Correct.
Perfect.
Page nine F, colocation of network nodes, it's $20 per year per ser, service pole.
Got it.
Thank you. Okay, alright, so the item on the table is, uh, item number ten. It's been read, we had a, uh, a motion and a second. All in favor? Uh, Douglas, you want to hold on? Douglas is abstaining at this time. It does pass, thank you. Okay, let's move on to item eleven, which is announcements by city council. JR, do you have anything to announce, please?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out to the mayor's picnic. Uh, it was a great time, there was a lot of people out there. Uh, we had a lot of different organizations that were out there as well, supporting us. And, uh, look forward to the national night out coming up soon in October.
Thank you, JR. Ms. Scott? Oh, she's good, okay, good. Ms. McLenn, good. Mr. Paul? Douglas, oh, good, I get to be last. Okay, uh, I also want to thank everyone for coming out, this was, this was bigger than better, bigger and better than ever. Uh, I understand we had two hundred and fifty to three hundred people this year. We had a lot of moving parts going on at one time. I think the chief and I called it, uh, organized chaos or mayhem, which one did we do? Whatever it was, it was a good time for all, the little kids were, were, uh, fantastic. And, uh, Zuniga and his bike clinic, and, uh, police, what they did, Captain America did win over the bad guy. And, and beat the bad guy up pretty good. We don't have any insurance claims there, right? Oh, okay, alright, okay, that's good. But, uh, thank everyone again for, for coming out. CHCO, I know you're watching, uh, thank you for everything you did. And, uh, other than that, I think we're going to, uh, move into an executive session, which is item two, which the city of Castle Hills will convene into an executive closed session as authorized by section five-five-one dash oh-seven-two of the government code to deliberate the possible purchase and value of real property and section five-five-one dash oh-seven-one, parentheses, two, of the Texas government to, code to consult with its attorney on a matter involving municipal enforcement of city ordinances and state laws in which the duty of the attorney to the city of Castle Hills under the Texas disciplinary rules, a professional conduct to the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Open Meetings Act. So with that said, it is now nine fourteen, and we're going to enter into executive session, Mini, will you? Let's see, we have Laverne.